Okay, great. All right. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome. I call to order the July 12, 2021 City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. So the next item is changes to the Order of Agenda. I'd like to propose that we move item 11A to after item seven. Are there any objections to that? All right. Are there any other proposed changes to the agenda this evening?
Nothing from staff this evening, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right. Then the next item is a presentation for Parks and Recreation Month, and I understand Amy Newby, our Parks and Recreation Director, will be is on hand this evening to receive the proclamation. Welcome, Amy.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Good to see you. So we are recognizing July 2021 as Parks and Recreation Month, whereas the San Carlos community recognizes the many benefits of parks and recreation and expresses deep appreciation for the support provided by the San Carlos Parks and Recreation Department throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes physical, emotional, and mental health and wellness through organized and self-directed fitness, play, and activities that facilitate social connections, human development, therapy, the arts, and lifelong learning, and whereas the local parks, recreation, trails, and open space are respite for all community members, and whereas throughout the pandemic, the Parks and Recreation Department has created memorable experiences through engaging virtual and physically distanced programs, dynamic online events, and new learning opportunities designed to keep families active, and whereas Parks and Recreation strengthens community identity by providing facilities and services that reflect and celebrate community character, heritage, culture, history, aesthetics, and landscape, and whereas Recreation fosters human development, providing positive alternatives for children and youth during non-school hours to reduce crime and mischief, thereby helping children and youth develop and grow into healthy and productive adults, and whereas thousands of children, adults, and seniors benefit from the wide range of services, facilities, and programs provided by the San Carlos Parks and Recreation Department, including the Youth Center and Senior Meal Program and events such as the Goblin Walk, Night of Holiday Lights, Music in the Park, and Family Campout, and whereas the City of San Carlos urges all its residents to recognize the Parks and Recreation areas are fundamental to the well-being of our community, enriching the lives of its residents and visitors, as well as adding value to the community's homes and neighborhoods. Now therefore be proclaimed that I Laura Palmer Lohan, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby declare July 2021 as Parks and Recreation Month, and in doing so urge the community to continue to use and enjoy our parks and recreational opportunities dated this 12th day of July 2021. Thank you, Amy, so much to you and your crew for all that you do for the community. Do any of my colleagues wish to make a comment at this time? I see Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say congratulations to Amy. She made a difficult job look easy, and I'm very happy that we have her.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Collins. And Amy, would you like to make any remarks?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Palmer Lohan and Councilmember Collins for your kind words. I think this means more this year than it ever has in the past, and as you've heard me say before, this summer, we are, you know, getting back to our pre-pandemic and normal programs and operations and events. We just kicked off our summer concert series this past Friday night, which turned out had a great turnout, and our adult community center started their Phase One of reopening today. So it's a really special day, them welcoming some of the seniors back, and our camps are in full swing. We are preparing our Fall Activity Guide to get mailed out to residents in the next few weeks. So it's just great to just have all of our programs back and feel like us again, and so excited to just, you know, see the community back together at our community events and in our programs and our facilities. So that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you for recognizing Parks and Recreation.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you again for all you do and navigating us through that, and I'm glad to hear that the events are so well attended. Off to a great start. All right. So with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item Five, Council Communications and Announcements, which are brief items from members of City Council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence that they have received. They are informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. So I see we have Vice Mayor McDowell, followed by Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My first comment actually builds perfectly on your proclamation. I wanted to give a big shout out to Amy and the Parks and Rec Department for a wonderful first concert series in Burton Park I attended on Friday, and there were so many people, the entire field was full. There were people of all ages and kids and strollers, and it was just, you could tell that everyone just really needed that, and they were so happy to be outside and listening to music together. I've never seen a concert more well-attended, actually. And several people commented to me that they really liked the new location out in the field, so something to think about, but wonderful, wonderful job, and thank you for providing that for the community. And then the second item that I just wanted to let the community know about is to please mark your calendars for September 11 from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for the Industrial Arts Horsepower Car Show. It's a wonderful event down near Devil's Canyon in our industrial arts area, and it's a lot of fun for the whole family, and you can learn more at horsepowercarshow.com. So thanks so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Rack? Councilmember, we can't hear you.
I lowered my hand but forgot to unmute. You would think by now I would have figured that out. I just want to say, last Friday, I had a chance to, I went and had my first, I think, sort of lunch at the ACC, sort of the pick-up-and-go lunch that they had over there, and it was awesome, and just the staff there is just amazing in terms of what they're doing. They mentioned they've sort of almost doubled the number of lunches that they've been serving since the pandemic in the community, and I just want to sort of take my hats off to the ACC staff for all the great work they're doing for our community. And the food was delicious. So check it out.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Rack. Councilmember Dugan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, I just want to give a shout out, you know, in our council packet for this evening's meeting is the quarterly reports from all of our various commissions, and I just, you know, always want to pause and recognize everything that our commissions do for for our city and for the good functioning of the City Hall, and I particularly want to call out our Youth Advisory Committee. Their report, it's well worth reading if anyone hasn't caught it. Very impressive work they did, in particular during the Mental Health Awareness Month. They actually organized and led three mental health workshops in our middle schools and high schools, and they did that in partnership with One Life Counseling, and I just found it very inspiring and very action-oriented, and I applaud them for that. And if there's any ways us as a council can work even closer with our youth committee, I would definitely welcome that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. So now we will move to, so public comment. Persons wishing to address the City Council on items not on the posted agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If the item you are speaking on is not listed on the agenda, please be advised that the City Council may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed under the Brown Act. The City Council's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future City Council agenda for more comprehensive action or report and formal public discussion and input at that time. Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to make a comment this evening?
Yes, we do have a hand raised from Craig Strong. Craig, you should be able to unmute and start your video at this time.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hello, Mayor Palmer Lohan and members of the City Council. My name is Craig Strong, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and speak quickly. I am a member of the San Carlos Little League Board, and as you may or may not know, we hosted an All-Star Juniors District 52 Tournament here in San Carlos at Madison Field at Burton Park. That was very successful and took a lot of effort, as you can imagine, from both the Little League organization as well as the City of San Carlos. And in appreciation for the efforts, in particular by Molly Crossfield, Tardem Wella, and Vicky Gaia at the parks, San Carlos has a couple mementos to present with you. One is a signed baseball from the local San Carlos District 52 All-Star Team, Juniors All-Star Team, and a photograph of the team. And speaking of that team, they actually won the championship of the tournament, and they're moving on to an early California regional tournament that's taking place beginning this weekend. We'd also like to thank, present to the Council, we already did that part, excuse me. Just a little quick background, though, I'd like to say, for those of you who don't know, Little League juniors are players 14 years old or younger, and the San Carlos League had 50 players, and during the regular season, and from there pulled the 12 All-Stars, and this team was managed by Steve Magna. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much, Craig, for joining us this evening, and congratulations to you and the team, and thank you for your contribution. It's very impressive. You know, it takes a lot of time and effort, especially postseason.
Yeah, you are marveling. Welcome. It was a great success. Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal, are there any other members of the public who wish to make comment at this time?
Yes.
I see Councilmember Collins has his hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Were there no more speakers?
We do have one more.
All right. I will wait. I will wait. I thought maybe that was the only one. Go ahead.
Debbie Valdaci, you're up next, and you should be able to unmute.
Good afternoon, and thank you very much for having us. I sent an email to all of you and as a city clerk, and I'd just like to make two comments to request future agenda items. The first one is I request clarification and correction of the Climate Mitigation and Adaptation Plan. At the last meeting, I believe the numbers that were used about new workers or new jobs in San Carlos was projected to be less than 400 when the real numbers are close to 7,500. So if you would put that on the agenda for the future to correct the Climate Mitigation and Adaptation Plan to reflect that, that would be greatly appreciated. And then with regard to the safety element of the general plan, the Hazard Mitigation Plan, and the San Carlos Strategic Plan, I went through the agenda items, and I really didn't see in their specific information about sea level rise as it relates to flooding and the FEMA flood zones in East San Carlos where there's going to be millions of square feet of biotech and commercial development. So I formally request that these plans include the addition of sections that specifically describe the risk of sea level rise from the bay, not fossil fuels, and mention the FEMA flood zones, including the proposed mitigations such as floodproofing and improving infrastructure for pumping stations and that. So if you look at the last page of the strategic plan, you'll see that it lists climate threats, but flooding and sea level rise specifically in the East San Carlos area is not one of them. So thank you for considering adding those. Thank you. Great.
Thank you, Debbie. And Jeff, if I could ask a member of staff to follow up with Debbie on these questions and inquiries, that would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you. I'll have somebody reach out.
Okay, thank you. All right. Crystal, are there any other members of the community who wish to make a comment?
No further hands.
Okay. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to thank Craig Strong for his comments as an alum of the San Carlos Little League. I'm happy that their teams represented the city better than my team. My All-Star team lost its first game and never went anywhere. So I'm glad that Little League is doing better these days.
Thank you. Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam. I just wanted to follow up on Ms. Valdaci's comments on the sea level rise, just to mention to Jeff, and I'm happy to talk with her directly, that CCG does have a Sea Level Rise Committee that's through the county that we are, you know, we are represented through that, and they have a lot of work on that. So it may be worthwhile for her to speak with the staff at CCG about some of the work that's being done on Sea Level Rise countywide, and which would include San Carlos in our area.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. So now we'll move on to Consent Calendar. Does anybody wish to pull an item from the Consent Calendar?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull items 7D and 7H.
Okay. All right. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull item L, please.
Okay. All right. So since there are so many items that are being pulled this evening, I would entertain a motion at this point for the rest of the items.
Madam Mayor, I would approve Consent Calendar 7A through C, E through G, I, J, and K.
Sorry, through the chair. Actually, item K is no longer needed as the applicants have pulled their application.
All right. So the motion is amended. Is there any second? All right. Crystal, can you follow?
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Okay. So Adam, do you want to move forward on discussion with item D?
Sure. Thank you, Madam. So item D, I just wanted to pull the question. I appreciate that, as John mentioned, all the great work done by all the commissions, but I did want to get some clarification. When I read through that, I noticed a number of unexcused absences and a canceled meeting for the Transportation and Circulation Commission, and I wanted to just sort of get an understanding kind of what's going on over there, because it seemed like multiple members of that commission have had multiple unexcused absences, and there was a meeting canceled.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. City Council members, Stephen Machida, Public Inspector. Yes, in regards to the Transportation and Circulation Commission, as City Council knows, we typically hold a meeting each month through Tuesday of each month, and during this year, I think as a result of some of the COVID and kind of being from home, it has been somewhat of a struggle to actually form a quorum. So as you kind of note in the report, we have actually three members who had two unexcused absences. Per the commission policy, three unexcused absences in any fiscal year will actually deem that position vacant, in which case the city clerk would kind of search for, perhaps recruit for another position. So if you look closely at the report, many of these occurred kind of late in the, what, third quarter? And so for the members of the commission that actually had the two unexcused absences, they were actually provided a letter or an email from the city clerk, kind of indicating that they were on the verge of actually, once they received their third unexcused absentee, were on the verge of actually vacating that spot. However, at the start of each new fiscal year, it resets, the number of unexcused absences resets. So as of July 1, it resets. And so, you know, basically, all commissioners on TNC have a clean slate going forward. So did that answer your question?
It did. I just want to make sure that, one, that we, they were sort of made aware of the policy, and obviously, it's disappointing to see that many unexcused absences, and I believe one meeting was canceled because of lack of quorum as well. So I understand that the process resets, but hopefully this next fiscal year, there'll be better attendance. That's all. I don't have any intention to attend to support this, and I just wanted to sort of get clarification on that. So I appreciate that, Stephen.
Okay. So I'll just kind of win my comments. I just want to echo Councilmember Dugan's previous comments during Councilmember's report, that I do appreciate the work of the various commissions, and I was also equally impressed by the work of the Youth Advisory Committee in their contribution to the community. I know serving in these bodies takes time and effort and energy, and I certainly appreciate all that people are doing.
Giant fat robins in the backyard. They're like fattest pigeons.
They're like fattest pigeons.
Uh, Crystal? Yes, I'm working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, so any other comments on this particular item? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to, um, move to approve item seven D. Accept the quarterly reports from city commissions and boards.
Second.
Second.
Crystal, could you call a roll, please? Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mayor Parma Lohan?
Yes.
Right, Councilmember Rack, uh, would you like to discuss the next item? Uh, item H?
Sure, and um, I emailed with uh, the city attorney this morning and that. I just wanted to, I, as I read through the packets for the, the two sewer lateral, there's two sewer items and the Alameda uh, items, I noticed that the bid, in the bid process, that the bids themselves and the information in there is not gender neutral. It refers to him, his, her, he, uh, throughout the documents. And so I, I would like just to request before we send these out that one, we correct that to make them gender neutral. And two, that we sort of, we, we go through that process to correct those because it's just, I don't, it shouldn't be that way. Um, I, I don't think we should have documents that are written, uh, in, you know, that are not gender neutral. So that was my only point. I'm happy to support this item. I just wanted to raise that and at request that staff uh, make those corrections and go through the other documents that we have to fix that.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Rack, for bringing that to the fore. I'm in support of that approach.
Yeah, the, for, city attorney here, and we will take a look at the documents to review them to, to make sure we, we meet with that, uh, policy that, that just enunciated that, um, you know, they should be gender neutral and, and we will fix that before they go out.
Thank you. So that, if there's no other, I'm happy to make a motion on that one, too.
Yep.
Uh, I move to adopt item seven H. Adopt a resolution approving the plans and specifications and authorizing advertisement and a call for bids for the two thousand twenty-twenty-two Sewer Lateral Replacement Project, C one seven-three-seven dash twenty-two.
I'll second.
All right, Crystal, if you can call a roll, please. Okay, Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes, and thank you, uh, Councilmember Rack, for bringing that to the fore. Really appreciate that.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
And Mayor Parma Lohan?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll move on to item L. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to pull this item. It has to do with the city, um, taking over the cost of an expanded crossing guard program with our schools. Um, and I think this is a wonderful example of how the city works with our school district to, um, support Safe Roots to School. So, um, I've asked for a very brief presentation just so that the community can be better informed about this. Thank you.
So Crystal, um, this is Steve. Could you kind of, um, advance this slides, please? But, uh, good evening again. This is Stephen Machida, Public Works Director. Um, actually, before I start the presentation, I would like to, uh, kind of make a statement that, in regards to the staff report, that, you know, basically there was not specific direction from council to pay a hundred percent of the crossing guard contract. However, but based on council's past discussions with the school district as well as staff, it appears that this is what council intended to do. So the actual staff reports reflects that tone. So anyway, uh, as you can see on the screen, the crossing guard locations are, are eleven sites now. Um, Woodland Arroyo, Britton Cedar, Arroyo Cedar, Dartmouth at Carolinda Campus Entrance, Exeter and Club, San Carlos Dartmouth, Bayview Club, Wellington Dartmouth, Wolfen, Devonshire and San Carlos, and then the two newest, um, intersection, Cordillares and Bell, and Melody and Heather, um, at the school entrance. So next slide, please. So this, uh, map kind of depicts, um, the actual locations and I'm sorry, um, you know, it's very, very small. So I do apologize, but starting in the lower right-hand corner, you can see at Britton and Cedar, Cedar and Arroyo and Woodland and Arroyo. This is on the lower right-hand corner. And then as you move kind of northwesterly, um, on San Carlos Avenue at Wellington, Devonshire, there's a crossing guard located there. And then predominantly, if you move northwest, uh, again, on San Carlos Avenue, there you would find at Wellington Dartmouth. And then, um, Dartmouth at Carolinda School Entrance, San Carlos and Dartmouth, Exeter and Club, and, uh, Club and Bayview, excuse me, Club and Bayview. Next slide, please. And then these are the two newest locations. So Heather School on Melody. This is the mid block crosswalk and at Bell and Cordillares. So these are the eleven, um, locations of the crossing guards that the, um, school just had requested. That will, uh, be put in place for the upcoming school year. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Stephen. I, I appreciate, um, your time and, and bringing these maps to us. And just to clarify, we, the request tonight is to increase the cost of the program from a hundred thousand dollars to two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. So more than doubling our support of this program, which, um, I'm very much in favor of. I think Safe Roots to School is a top priority. I know as a parent, it gives me a lot of peace of mind when my kids are riding their bikes to school and walking to school that, um, they're going to cross safely. So I'm definitely in favor of this. And, you know, I think that having Safe Roots to School helps people get out of single occupancy vehicles and encourages our youth to get a little activity and exercise in the mornings and afternoons. So, um, thank you very much for bringing this to us. I'm proud to support this. I'm happy to work for a city that supports our school district. And, um, this is a pretty substantial amount to take off the books for the school district. So very pleased to do that. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Rack and then Councilmember Dugan and Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to first thank Vice Mayor McDowell for pulling this item. I, I do think it's good to highlight the work being done in partnership with the school district. And, uh, I, I, I do think that, you know, it, it is an item that, that fits naturally for us to work with them, uh, based on, you know, public safety. And just want to thank Stephen and his team for all the great work around this to help identify the sites and work, work with the school district on this. I think it's a, a great win all around for our community and look forward to supporting this.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and, uh, thank you, Vice Mayor McDowell. Glad to get a, uh, report on this. Uh, you know, very supportive of crossing guards and this program. I'm glad we're doing it. Uh, it's the first time I've ever, you know, wondered who funds and organizes the crossing guards. I guess I was a bit surprised that it was the city and not, not the school district. And so just a quick question, uh, Stephen, is it, um, you know, i- is this just the city helping the school district? Or is there a particular theory that, you know, cities usually support crossing guards? And is this what's you done elsewhere? I just, I've never encountered this before.
So what we done in San Carlos is basically the school district has, you know, actually manages the crossing guard contracts. So basically they, um, you know, they kind of select and, uh, select the crossing guards and they, they specifically identify. But probably back in twenty-fourteen, I think that's when the school, school and the city got involved and basically decided, you know, what can we do to kind of assist each other? So at that point in time, um, the city actually agreed to pay like fifty, fifty percent of the cost of the school crossing guards. And then over time, um, um, you know, this, um, a- as more of the need kind of branched out for other intersections, um, you know, the school district asked if they could expand the program and which they have done so. And it was, really is probably in the last couple of years because of some of the, um, money shortfall with the school district that they've asked the city, um, to kind of fund more of the program. Um, so our, our role is really kind of funding the program, whereas the management and administration of the contract itself is all done by, uh, the school district.
Okay, no, thank you for that. And, uh, and I'm happy to support this measure and I'm sure our funding has increased the number of crossing guards that are available to our community, which is a win for public safety. Uh, so very supportive of that. And as others have pointed out, you know, it's a significant contribution by the city directly to our schools. And then just, it's worth observing, this will be, you know, probably a program that will go on forever. So that's just, uh, you know, very strong, um, uh, commitment of support by the city. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to add my thanks to, um, Vice Mayor McDowell, uh, for bringing this up. I do have one, um, question about the staff report under alternatives. It says, uh, additional cost of forty-three thousand one hundred and appropriate one hundred and thirty-four thousand three hundred. Is that correct? I thought it's two hundred and thirty-four thousand.
That is, that is correct. However, we do have a hundred thousand dollars in the current budget to cover the, to make it two hundred.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for clearing that up.
Okay, any further discussion or questions on this item? All right, we'll entertain our motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve item seven A, uh, seven L. Adopt a resolution agreeing to fully fund the San Carlos School District for two additional crossing guard locations for a total of eleven locations at total cost of two hundred and forty-three thousand three hundred dollars for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one-twenty-two and appropriate a hundred and thirty-four thousand three hundred from the general fund.
Second.
All right, we have a, um, motion by Vice Mayor McDowell and a second by Rack. And Crystal, if you can call a roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Parma Lohan? Yes. All right, uh, so now we'll move to, um, item eleven A. Consideration of Appointing Two Youth Advisory Council Voting Members for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two term and two, uh, voting members for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three term and recognizing two retiring voting members. Um, and this evening we have with us, um, on this item is, um, Chris, Caitlin Matoso, Recreation Coordinator. Welcome, Caitlin.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council Members. My name is Caitlin Matoso and I'm the Recreation Coordinator for Youth Development. We are looking forward to swearing in our new Youth Advisory Council members as well as recognizing some outgoing members. Two of our members being appointed tonight will be renewing their terms. Ezra Bergson-Michelson is seeking his fourth appointment to the YAC. He's a senior at the Urban School of San Francisco. Liam Tierney is seeking his second appointment to the YAC. Liam is a senior at St. Francis High School. Ezra and Liam will be serving one-year terms since they are seniors in high school. Next, we have Samina and Alice who'll be serving two-year terms. Samina Ginwala is seeking her first appointment to the YAC. She is a sophomore at Cromwell High School. Alice Finkelstein is seeking her first appointment to the YAC as well, and she is a junior at Cromwell High School. Before we appoint our new members, I would like to recognize some outgoing members. Maya DeBolcher-Bubu, um, was involved with YAC for three years. She served as our secretary for the past two years and will be attending Northeastern University. Sebastian Fune served one two-year term. He was our chair this past year and he'll be attending Harvard in the fall. And with that, I'll hand it back over to Crystal.
Actually, before I can swear them in, I will need, uh, council's appointment. Yeah, thank you. I was wondering what the procedure was. So, um, um, if, uh, I'd be willing to entertain a motion on this item.
Madam Mayor, I'll move to appoint Ezra Bergson-Michelson and Liam Tierney to the Youth Advisory Council as a voting member for the twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one-twenty-two term. And appoint Samino Ginwala and Alice Finkelstein to the Youth Advisory Council as a voting member for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three term. And recognize outgoing Youth Advisory Council voting members Maya DeBolcher, Cheravu and Sebastian Fune for their years of service.
Thank you. I'll entertain it. Uh, is there a second for this?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, I want to congratulate Ezra, Liam, Samina and Alice for your appointments. And, uh, thank you for your ongoing service and, uh, your commitment to stepping up to leadership. And also to thank Maya and Sebastian, uh, for your service and wish you well on your next journey. Um, exciting universities that have, uh, that you found for yourselves. So wishing, wish you well on that journey. And now we'll move to, I believe, city clerk, Crystal Louie, uh, to do the oath, uh, of office. Yes.
We have the vote first?
Oh, sorry. I, I heard, I, I did it in my head. All right, Crystal, can you call a roll? I knew I needed to go back to Crystal for something.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Parma Lohan?
Of course, yes.
Okay. And if I can get Ezra, Liam, uh, if, if you are joining us, Liam, I'm not sure you were able to make it. Samina and Alice, if I can get you on camera. One, two, three. Okay, I do see you've three. Um, okay, if, uh, did you get a chance to print out your oath of office? And you can go ahead and unmute at this time. I'm seeing a head. Okay.
Unfortunately, I did not.
You did not? Okay. And, uh, was that Alice or Samina that confirmed or both?
Yeah.
Okay. For, for those of you that did print it out, if you can go ahead and show it on the camera that you have not signed it. Okay, just Samina. Okay, thank you. Okay, Samina, so if you can raise your right hand, I'll go ahead and do your oath. And for Alice and Ezra, I'll schedule a time to do that off-site, offline with you after. Uh, so Samina, if you can raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge duties for which you are about to enter?
I do.
Okay, thank you. And go ahead and sign your oath. And show it on the camera. Okay, and so you are all set and I will work with our other newly appointed, uh, officials after offline. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, so, uh, next on the agenda is a report to council. Um, we'll receive a report from, uh, uh, Police Chief Bell with respect to, um, an update on policing services in the community. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. And do I have control, Crystal?
Yes, you do.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Staff and Members of the public. My name is Christina Bell and I am your Bureau Chief of Police. The purpose of this presentation, oh, there it is. The purpose of this presentation is to fulfill a specific request from City Council requesting an update on thefts within the city and the impact of the pandemic on the judicial system. I click the next slide, Crystal. There we go. All right, little delay. So on April tenth, in twenty-twenty, the Judicial Council of California mandated a statewide emergency zero bail schedule. Each presiding judge in every county had the opportunity or were forced to implement. And in our county, they did the zero bail. It was also recommended that property and nonviolent crimes be issued citations and not booked into the county jails. This also included every person held in pre-trial custody, meaning in our jail already, but haven't been officially charged or, I'm sorry, convicted. This meant that bail was zero for misdemeanors and felonies except for serious and violent felonies. A full audit of all in custody inmates was conducted and those eligible were released in accordance with the mandate. This allowed the Sheriff's Office to maintain an inmate population that was manageable during the initial stages of COVID-nineteen to help prevent a, an outbreak within our facilities. Citations were given with a promise to appear on the streets with a court date one year away from the date of the offense, whereas pre-COVID was only two months away. On June nineteenth, twenty-twenty, the emergency bail schedule has changed from zero dollars to two hundred and fifty for all misdemeanors and felonies not in the exemption category. So this meant it was no longer zero, it was now two hundred and fifty, which provided some leverage for So this meant it was no longer zero, it was now two hundred and fifty, which provided some leverage for individuals to book for the lesser offenses into custody. However, they still were only held for the two hundred and fifty-dollar bail, which in comparison normally would have been like ten thousand, fifty thousand, depending on the crime. The emergency bail schedule is to remain in effect or until modified by the Court Executive Committee on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, or whichever comes first, but we're right around the corner from July thirty-first. On March first, twenty twenty-one, the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office resumed normal booking operations for all arrestees, meaning that we weren't asking cities to side out on the streets, but it was okay to go ahead and book. However, the two hundred and fifty bail still remains in effect today. So this chart, this data was collected from the Board State and Community Corrections website, also known as BSCC. And I have the link, which is public to everyone. Um, so you'll see that in the chat. You can look at any county in the Cali, in the state of California for reference. So the first chart shows the average daily population as the ADP. So you can see in February of twenty twenty, it was in the one thousand range. And around, uh, the April tenth is that when we hit the dip around the five hundred. And then slowly it's increased up until where we are when we pulled the data on July third, where we're slowly creeping back up. The below line is the bookings for each day. So you can see how the bookings were very high in February and then it decreased due to the booking restrictions. The below chart illustrates the releases from our custody, San Mateo County only, um, and just shows you through July third, twenty twenty-one. So if you note the significant drop in population between February and June, and we stayed below five hundred inmates, which significantly helped the, uh, the risk of outbreak, which we were successful with in not having an outbreak inside of our correctional facilities, which was very important. There's some staff observations, uh, related to crime trends during this time. There was a twenty-four percent increase in felony arrests between March and December of twenty twenty compared to twenty nineteen, just because there were more felons out on the streets. Outside agencies often published information, bulletins identifying suspects and suspect vehicles who were arrested and believed to be of interest to outside agencies due to related crimes. Numerous cases involving suspects arrested and found to be repeat offenders within our agency and outside agencies. Deputies often reported making statements where suspects would make a statement like, hey, you're not going to take me to jail. You can't take me to jail anyways. Just give me my ticket and I'll be on my way. For example, one suspect was arrested and cited due to COVID booking restrictions nearly a half dozen times for the same offense of a stolen vehicle, both by San Carlos deputies and outside agencies. That all occurred in the summer of twenty twenty. We also had a parolee at large arrest for possession of a stolen vehicle. And he also had possession of a firearm, but he was released with, with a citation because it's not a violent felony. Even though your deputies were met with these restrictions, this did not stop them from actively patrolling your neighborhoods to combat crime. So for this report out, we captured data from January first, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and compared the same months for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And then the very first column you'll see is a five-year average from two thousand fourteen to two thousand eighteen. The following data categories were gathered: residential burglaries, commercial burglaries, vehicle burglaries, auto theft, and larceny. Vehicle burglaries fall into the category of larceny. However, we separated it to keep the community informed. Catalytic converters also fall into the category of larceny. What is larceny? It's a part one crime, one of eight categories which we report to the DOJ annually. And according to the FBI website, and excuse me, I'm going to read this so we all know. Larceny is identified as the unlawful taking, carrying, leaving, or riding away of property from the possession or constructive possession of another. Examples are thefts of bicycles or automobile accessories, shoplifting, pocket picketing, or the stealing of any property or article that is not taken by force or violence or by fraud. Attempted larcenies are also included and counted. Catalytic converter thefts and vehicle burglaries account or accounted for about forty-four percent of the entire larceny category in twenty twenty-one and fifty-seven percent in twenty twenty. So I love maps because we see dots, we see the city. Catalytic converters, we've had forty-five so far. Last year we had fifty. So downward trend, however, is still a lot because our five, five-year average is zero. This is a regional issue, it's not just a San Carlos issue. So the following five slides will provide a visual representation of the locations that each crime occurred. Please note that each map is zoomed out and one dot might represent multiple offenses. And just for reference with respect to catalytic converters, and I'll get into a little detail in a second, but it's such a, a national issue that, uh, AT&T, they have a large vehicle fleet. They've gone as far as painting all of their catalytic converters blue and putting a big old A on it. So that way, when the corrupt saws, saws it off, it's going to be hard to sell it somewhere else because you can't resell it and they'll be able to, uh, be identified. Those are a few things that the region is doing to combat these crimes. We had a few calls for service, uh, with residents witnessing these, um, thefts. I just want to remind everyone, it's very important that you call us immediately and please do not confront these suspects. So the faster you call us, the faster we can get there to apprehend these individuals. Vehicle burglaries, forty-eight. We see trends on the east side. And this crime is specifically where someone forces their way into a locked vehicle. So it has to be a locked vehicle to be considered a burglary, a vehicle burglary. Auto theft, also a trend in the region. Majority have been on the ECR corridor on the east side. A lot of, uh, later models, trucks, Hondas, Toyotas, Silverados. That's Chevy, right? Yes. The Chevy Silverado. It is on the rise in the region and I have, uh, I, I have a lot of conversations with our vehicle theft task force sergeant and staff about, uh, kind of their tips and tricks and what they're doing. And we're, um, deploying those resources in town, um, by additional cameras, et cetera. I've seen also in some of our neighboring, uh, cities that they have up to a hundred a month. So all in all, we're on the bottom three of the county for auto thefts. Residential burglary, we're at thirty for, from January first to June thirtieth. Twenty-one of the thirty occurred due to an unlocked structure. What does that mean? They left their side gate unlocked, which led to a side, side garage door unlocked. Left their garage door wide open. Left their, um, their garage control thing inside their unlocked vehicle, but it was in plain view. So they check the door, open it, pop, pop the, um, garage, go in, grab the bike, and they're gone. Of the fourteen of the twenty-one, only a bike was stolen from the garage. Lastly, three out of the thirty total, the suspect actually made it all the way inside the house. Only three. Anecdotally, on June twenty-fourth at one in the morning, a resident on the three hundred block of Oakview Drive called us and deputies were dispatched to the, to the address on the report of a prowler. Prowler is someone's on my property and I don't know why they're there. An initial area check yielded nothing. However, forty minutes later, a deputy assigned to the San Carlos Bureau spotted the suspect on his bike headed towards Redwood City by stacks. The deputy attempted to pull over the suspect, but he did not stop. The suspect evaded the deputy, left the bike, and got away. The good news is that suspect was responsible for three unlocked residential burglaries that evening. But deputies were able to recover all of the property that was taken from everyone and returned. This is a great example of how our community being proactive and calling us right away has a positive outcome. We're, we'll catch him. It's just going to take us a little time. Commercial burglaries. So again, trending on the ECR corridor, east side, uh, easy access to the freeways, El Camino. Uh, another anecdotal story, Junk King had just installed cameras inside of their, uh, their business. And the owner was at home in Hayward, I think it's Hayward, East Bay. He's just looking at his cameras just for fun. And he sees a subject inside of a vehicle inside of his warehouse. He knew all of his workers had gone home. He called us, we surrounded the area, called the guy out. No injuries. Guy was arrested for a commercial burglary. Another great example of utilizing tools to help us, you know, with the surveillance cameras. It was huge for us to get there and he could, he gave us a play-by-play of where this individual was. And just some notable, notable investigations, not to bring this up all the time, but it's just a reminder that these cases that we had, the Operation Shattered Glass and Operation Proof of Precious, where it just started off as a small, little petty crime where we had just enough evidence to give us a lead to a suspect, which led to these huge operations and taking down massive fencing operations outside of this county. But people are coming here to take things from us. Also, I wanted to highlight a, a case where it was a simple mail theft and one of our CSOs took the report because there was no suspect information. Got a call back from, uh, the reporting party saying that, um, I, I think someone took an expensive car out in my name. So our, our deputy was able to, uh, do, uh, great investigative work, wrote search warrants and found the suspect that stole the mail, opened up an apartment in San Jose in this individual's name, a San Carlos resident, and two high-end vehicles. So all of that was taken care of just by one little lead. All that to say of how important it is for our community to communicate with us as much as they can. Sheriff's Office response. So what do we do when we know there's a trend? So every week we meet as the command staff in all the bureaus and we figure out what's going on in our areas. And we utilize our resources and our information to do the directed patrols, have high, the high visibility saturations. That's when we'll use some overtime and get some undercover individuals in there. We'll bring in the street crimes team, our crime analysts will do their, their analyzing. The detective bureau is great, um, at finding all of the, uh, the suspects and then, uh, then justice is served. Also, uh, just a note with the countywide task force, that's the, uh, narcotics task force as well as the vehicle theft task force. So in terms of arrests, what did that look like with all these site outs and, and such? So we pulled just theft-related arrests in twenty twenty and that was ninety-eight for the year. But of the ninety-eight, thirty-four were actually booked into jail, but sixty-four were cited and released on scene, which is a significant amount. So that was all of twenty twenty. So then from now in twenty twenty-one, we're kind of seeing the pendulum swinging so we're getting back to even. And my hope is that after the two hundred and fifty bail goes away, that people will stay in a little bit longer and they'll, their case will get, you know, seen all the way through and there'll be some repercussions for what they've done if proven guilty. So next slide is the intelligence-led policing model. And I know we talked about this before, but just as a reminder, we use the intelligence-led policing model to combat crime in our county. Our team of crime analysts look at trends and formulate internal reports to assist in directed patrol efforts and awareness. We rely on our community to report all crimes to us regardless of the perceived severity. Each report adds to the information we use to implement effective plans to reduce crime rates in the city of San Carlos. So the next three slides are our public service announcements that we've recently deployed on social media platforms to educate our community. So this is, um, and we also did, I believe, a video, um, recently, but just with catalytic converters, um, you know, the recommendations. And we're going to put this in the newsletter again, um, the next council newsletter, so it is deployed. But just, um, stay vigilant, um, park your car in a well-lit area. If it's not well-lit, then, you know, we, you want to buy the lights that illuminate the area. I find that if you reverse into your driveway, um, it's a lot, you, you're, you expose more of the front of your vehicle where people are going to be under. So that's what I do at my house and, um, knock on wood, it's worked so far. And then just obviously reporting suspicious crimes immediately to us. Um, and we'll get into the, the reporting in a second. But protecting your valuables. So as I spoke before with the residential burglaries, you know, the, the vast majority was unlocked structures. And so we've, we've got to work together and we've got to lock up our stuff because unfortunately there are people that are looking for crimes of opportunity and they're walking around our neighborhoods and they are checking doors and, um, checking side gates. So if we remain vigilant as a community, then we can reduce this together. And we'll also, um, put this on that council newsletter. So how do I report a crime? If the, if the crime is in progress, call nine-one-one. Or if you're like, if I need a deputy right here, right now, you just call nine-one-one. But if you're not sure, oh, I don't know. If you're not sure, call nine-one-one. And if it's not a non-emergency, if you call that six-five-zero-eight-zero-two-four-three-two-one, that is a direct line to, uh, dispatch. If you call the, uh, three-six-three-four-nine-one-one, that gives you to a phone tree of all of our bureaus, but the, the four-three-two-one is a direct line to our dispatcher. And also, you know, we have anonymous tip lines for, um, other variety of, um, cases if people have seen something or they, they're, they want to be anonymous. And also just reporting, uh, crimes that have no suspect information online. You can do that online on that website. And that is all I have for this. And we'll take questions now.
Thank you, Chief Bell. I very much appreciate it. And any questions for, uh, Chief Bell on this item? Councilmember Collins, and then we'll go to Councilmember Rack.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, thank you for the report, Chief Bell. Um, it was very ex, it was excellent and very thorough. Um, I just had one question on that commercial burglary where the owner saw the suspect, uh, on his, uh, on the cameras that he had, had installed. And you said that that suspect was subsequently arrested. Was that suspect, uh, taken to jail or was his crime of a nature where he was cited and released?
So since it was after March first, he did go to jail. But if it was prior, if say like we got him prior to March first, he would have been cited out.
Okay. And, and did he pay a two hundred and fifty-dollar bail then?
I don't know. Once we drop him off.
You don't know?
So he would have had a, he would have had a two hundred and fifty-dollar bail, but I don't.
Maybe the, maybe the, maybe the question is, thank you. That, that was really the more appropriate question I should have asked. Was he subject to the two hundred and fifty-dollar bail? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, and Chief Bell, thanks for the presentation and the, the information. I got, I guess I'd, I'd want to understand a little bit, you know, we, it looked like from the map, uh, which is, I appreciate the visual on that, that's helpful for, for me too, as I kind of look at that. It looks like, given for the proximity to the freeway on the east side, there was a sort of more significant number of vehicle thefts and other things. Are there, you know, are there specific things you're doing around that area? Or, you know, do we feel like we have enough resources in terms of the, you know, license plate readers and other things? Or is there, is there more we should be doing, um, in that area of our community?
So as of right now, um, the Sheriff's Office is looking at, um, purchasing something called a flock camera, which, um, our vehicle theft task force does have, um, and we have utilized those resources within our city. Um, other cities up and down the peninsula have those resources. So, um, that, that is helpful. As of right now, I believe that we do have enough resources, um, with what we have. Because all in all, um, the crime compared to other cities, um, we're not looking so bad.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dugan, and then we'll go to Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, uh, thank you, uh, Chief Bell. A great report. I too like maps. Uh, you, you learn a lot looking at those dots. So, uh, thank you for that. And, uh, and also thank you for the, uh, the practical tips and advice, uh, throughout that and the emphasis on, uh, everyone communicating with the police. I just want to emphasize that, uh, great, great point, and I appreciate how well you highlight that. And I feel sorry for any criminal who tries to steal your catalytic converter, that's for sure. Uh, my question is, uh, and, 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 and what a frustrating time with that catch and release and having, uh, you know, suspects literally taunting your officers. That's just, uh, upsetting at best. So I'm, I'm glad we're getting to the other side of that. And, uh, uh, all of you should be commended for your patience around, uh, such an unusual time. Uh, and that's really my question. Do we have visibility of when that, the bail system is going to return to normal? And we're going to get back, uh, to the way things, uh, used to be in, in the justice system?
So the order expires July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. So unless the Judicial Council of the State of California implements another order, which I haven't heard yet, um, but when, if we do hear, we'll get the, the memo and I will communicate with, that with council if that does occur. But it is due to sunset on the thirty-first.
Terrific. I'm glad that's coming up and. Terrific. I'm glad that's coming up and that must be a relief for, uh, you and your team.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Chief Bell, thank you so much for the great presentation. I really appreciate all the time you spent in putting data together for us and the maps. Um, I really appreciated your, um, sheriff's office response to slide. Um, I think it shows just how valuable it is for San Carlos to have the sheriff's office here. Um, because you really do just have so many resources. You mentioned the vehicle theft task force. There's the crime suppression unit, the detective bureau, the criminal analysts. I mean, we have so many wonderful resources at our disposal. So I think that's really important to, um, to share with the community. My question for you is regarding shoplifting. And this is something that a lot of communities are dealing with right now. Um, I've received some emails about it. I'm, I'm wondering what your thoughts are on shoplifting? And are, have we been doing some outreach to the businesses to encourage them to report it versus, you know, or taking some action versus just kind of, um, letting people walk out the door?
Yes. So thank you for that question because, um, we, obviously we have a lot of merchants in town. So it's really up to the business owner to, uh, report the crime because it, it is a misdemeanor not committed in our presence. So someone has to say, I saw that person take it. And that person has to then sign a, um, citizen's arrest form, be willing to testify in court to, to prosecute. So I can say that CVS, um, has, uh, an asset protection officer that does communicate with us very well. Um, they call us right away and we prosecute and we book or we will cite and release depending on the circumstances, um, for CVS. Um, others, like Home Depot is great. Um, and, you know, I know that there's been a lot of stuff in the media regarding, uh, Walgreens, but just with respect to Walgreens, they do have a company policy where they do not, um, they do not contact law enforcement. So that's really on the business, that's their choice. Um, we, we've tried, um, but that's kind of where we are right now. So it just depends on the business that we're dealing with.
Thank you. That's really helpful information to know. So it sounds like you are, your office is, um, very much in contact with our businesses here in town and open lines of communication. Um, do you see the city playing a role at all? Or is this purely what sounds to me like a business decision and working with the sheriff's office?
It's a business decision. Um, and so I think obviously the smaller mom and pop shops, um, you know, we, you know, utilizing our downtown services unit, you know, to educate how for people to report a crime, you know, if someone's just walking into a nail salon and stealing something, um, you know, just so we get the word out there to all of our merchants, not just the high-end retailer, like the, the bigger corporations. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Chief Bell, for that report. Very, very helpful. Um, I, I, I think it, it seems like, um, it, it definitely seems like the crime was up during the COVID period. Are you anticipating, you know, that it's going to stay at that state for a period of time? Or do you expect, you know, can, can you give us some sort of a forecast as to what to expect as we move forward?
Well, if I could predict things, I'd be a millionaire. But in looking at trends, you know, over the years, we, we have ebbs and flows, right? So if we have a large crew, um, taking out catalytic converters and then we catch them, then we'll see that decrease, right? So it's just a matter of us communicating with our partners, communicating with the detective bureau, and then our, our men and women on the streets, you know, taking their cases from start to finish. And, you know, what's great about this bureau is that people take that extra step and they want to take their case from start to finish and they want to find that bad guy. They're not just sending it to the detective bureau for them to figure out. So it's a great team effort here. Um, so I do like, you know, when things are high, they must go low. So eventually they will go down there, but I can assure you that we are working very hard to get as low as we can. We know it's not going to be zero, but we'll try to get it as close to zero as we can.
Great, thank you. Uh, and I also appreciate the, the tips, um, and best practices that the community can engage in, especially your invitation to have people call right away when they see that something is amiss. And, uh, you're stressing to, um, you know, kind of step out of the way, um, and, and let your team come in and, and do the job uh, so that, you know, people can stay safe and not put themselves into harm's way. So I appreciate, and I look forward to the upcoming communications to the community that you're, uh, working on.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, Crystal, are there any members of the, uh, public that wish to make comment on this item?
No, there are no hands raised.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, uh, Chief Bell. Very much appreciated. Uh, thanks to you and your team.
Thank you.
All right. So, um, okay, the next item is, um, Greg Rubens will do a presentation on, um, the study session for private, uh, security guards.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I, I, at the meeting last month, um, the council asked, uh, for a study session item to generally report on some of the options the council might have in pursuing an ordinance to, um, require or encourage, uh, security guards, um, for businesses that, um, might cause excessive or out of the ordinary police response. And so in my, um, review, I was, uh, I looked at some of our local cities. And there, what I found was that, um, cities with larger entertainment venues, um, are much more likely to have an ordinance, um, that requires security guards. And it manifests itself either as a health and safety ordinance where, um, where security guard is, is required for a certain type of business with objective standards. Um, we have that actually in one of our codes, um, in, in San Carlos for adult businesses. But other cities have expanded that to other types of businesses that the larger entertainment venues, you know, theaters, shopping malls, things of that nature that, um, were, were, um, the, the community is, uh, does not have the resources to, to, um, have a police presence at all times at, at those types of facilities. The, the, uh, other types of ordinance I, I saw were, um, and it's in the staff report, um, the brief summary of San Mateo's ordinance. San Mateo is a larger city than us and they do have some larger entertainment venues and some shopping centers. So I think that was probably the genesis of their ordinance. Uh, they also have, uh, for, for type of business and size of business. And so that's how they've approached it. You have to get a permit if you're an entertainment facility there. Uh, and it has due process and other, um, requirements that if, if a permit's going to be, um, applied for, if there, uh, persons are entitled to, uh, a hearing on, on the propriety, uh, propriety of the permit. Um, or if it's to be revoked, there's a process to, to, for revocation of the permit for a problematic business. Uh, we have, in San Carlos, we, we also have an ordinance. It's, I, I allude to it in the staff report. We have an unruly gathering ordinance in town that might operate as a, as a good model for, um, some of the types of situations we may experience proactively. We don't have, we have, we've had some problems, but, but we, we haven't had, uh, major problems. But, you know, the downtown is evolving and, um, it's a very popular destination. So one of the ideas I, I think was to, that if you were going to do an ordinance, we'd, we'd want to look at what types of situations might we see downtown? And then we'd work with, um, the sheriff's office to determine what type of situations and how we could help, um, with, with, uh, uh, security threats or nuisances, uh, in our downtown area. Uh, the, the, the ordinance in San Mateo, I forgot to mention this, um, has different layers of security. So there's, for the larger businesses, they need to have a certified security guard. But for smaller businesses, they, they need to have a security presence, not a licensed security guard. So the old fashioned term maybe is a bouncer or, or a door person that kind of monitors the, the door. Um, and, uh, during, during the peak periods, like 10, between 10:00 PM and 1:00 AM, um, and closing time is, um, from, from my research, that was kind of an important time for, for these types of businesses where problems might, might occur. So if we did modify our, or, or come up with a, another layer for unruly gatherings directed at businesses, that might be one direction we could pursue. And so the options you have are just to give us direction tonight. We don't, we don't, there's no ordinance on for, for consideration tonight, but what we're seeking is direction, whether or not you want, us to draft something to bring back to you or not.
Thank you. Um, all right. So, um, I'm not seeing any hands up, so I'll, um, kick us off here. So, so my, my perspective, I, I'm seeing what you're seeing, Greg, is that the, kind of the nature of our businesses are changing somewhat in, in the downtown area. And as San Carlos evolves, right, we also have a lot more development that's coming. And while we're not at the same scale as a San Mateo, I think there's, you know, I would like us to consider, you know, what is the right, the, you know, the, um, appropriate, uh, resource, um, and solution, uh, for the challenges that, you know, we anticipate, seeing in our community. And so, you know, with that, um, I would be open to, you know, continuing to explore, I think what you called it, the unruly gathering ordinance, maybe is the place to, to kind of lift off and, uh, clarify, you know, what, you know, what, what our intentions are with that. Uh, because again, I, you know, one of our values as a, a council is safety of our community. So, um, that, that would be, that would.
Let me know that it should be up in five minutes. He's rebooting it at the, at the moment.
Okay. So do we need to take a pause then until this is, we're reconnected?
Legally, we do not have to take a pause because of the malfunction of the video. But, um, but I, it's up to the council if you would like to just take a break and, and give, uh, give us time to, to fix the signal.
Comments from council on that proposal? Do you want to wait or continue?
Through the chair, we, I just heard that we are back up and running now.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Uh, Councilmember Dugan, and then we'll go to Councilmember Collins.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And, uh, yeah, I certainly, uh, appreciate, uh, your concern about this issue. The, uh, uh, I, I guess I'm, I'm also in the camp of just wanting to understand the problem that we're solving. Uh, you know, when, when there are problems in town, uh, I, you know, and I, I, I'm always proud of how San Carlos responds and gets on top and solves problems. And I, I'm just in the camp of making sure when, when we spend our valuable, uh, resources and time, we're, we're solving a problem that, that's, that's pressing in some, some manner. And I, I guess I just haven't seen any, um, reports, you know, of, of where this would be needed. Um, I have a little bit of a hard time picturing kind of dormant and bouncers in downtown San Carlos. But if, if that's really something we need, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm more than willing to look at it. But I guess I would like some understanding of the problem and, you know, uh, from Chief Bell or, or whomever, uh, is, is detecting something that we need to work on here.
So I can say, yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. As of right now, there isn't an overwhelming nuisance downtown of where we're getting called multiple times to businesses. So there, there is not that need in my, in my perception that, that we should move forward. But I like the six-month idea of like, okay, things are opening up, let's reassess. Um, and what, what does that look like to measure? I'll have to circle back with my team and just figure out exactly how we can measure that. And where are we going to put the parameters or like how, how we're going to gather that data?
Thank you, Chief.
Councilmember Collins, I saw your hand up, but I wasn't sure if it was related to this or.
Uh, no, it was, and that was actually responding to the, uh, uh, what to do with the connection being down. But, uh, but now that I, now that I've got the floor for a few seconds, I'll just say that I, I, I think a wait and see, uh, approach is probably appropriate at this point.
All right. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you. I'll quickly chime in that I, I support that approach too, to give it six months and, um, give Chief Bell an opportunity to, to collect data in a, in a standardized fashion. So thank you, Councilmember Rack, for suggesting that.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, I think, I think from my perspective, I think this is really more about, you know, being proactive and setting expectations that we want our community to be safe. And, um, and, you know, um, in conversations with Greg, we talked about the idea of, you know, having, um, something on the books that sets those expectations. And I, I don't necessarily know that it needs to be a uniformed police officer or security guard, right? There could be multiple solutions to this, um, as he described. Um, but I think the, um, kind of the intention is to, you know, not wait until we have a, a, a problem. And, uh, and not also, you know, sink, um, taxpayer money into, um, policing services where we could have gotten ahead of something. So, um, I hear council's, uh, perspective on this and it sounds like, uh, there's a wish to, um, wait and see, but I would ask that Chief Bell come back in a few months' time to let us know, uh, how things are going. Uh, there is an approach that we could potentially take, um, that, um, you know, Greg, I don't know if you want to talk about that at all or not. Um, I think you alluded to it earlier in your presentation, but maybe if you could share that with the group, that would be helpful.
Well, I think that one of the things that we talked about, um, earlier, uh, was how to create a, an ordinance that incentivizes, um, businesses that are experiencing calls or, or, or situations to hire a security guard. Um, so instead of the, hey, you're, if you have a, like I talked about earlier, um, having a police response, um, charge, if you have, the police have to come back, um, you know, more than a set period of time that, that the ordinance would determine, um, would be a, an incentive to have a security guard, um, perhaps. And if there was a police response, the, in consideration for having a security guard, you, you might have a reduced or no charge for a response or only for something that's, um, defined in the ordinance. in the ordinance that's severe enough that it could have been avoided if with appropriate mitigation by the property owner. That's just a concept we talked about. I mean, obviously, it has to be put into an ordinance form that's enforceable and has objective standards. But that was one of the concepts that I think could be workable.
Thank you, Greg. Yeah, so I just request that council stay open to this idea. Again, I'm thinking about making sure that we're applying resources appropriately into the right places. So Crystal, are there any comments on this? Anna?
Yes, we do have one hand raised. Kit, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, this is Kit with the City Council.
Yes, hi, Kit.
Okay, good. I just wanted to voice my opinion on this. I think, first of all, our downtown area, I'm here every night late, and I don't see any trouble, first of all. So I'm wondering like John, what the issues are that would bring up this needing security or private security. And then the other thing, I actually sent an email to the council today, and I showed them what I have done at my place of business in order to try and alleviate any pressure and troublemaking in our area. And I would like to see it, maybe get all the businesses that might have, you know, might have issues at times, from time to time, get the option to do that as well. That's about all I have to say at this point. I know it's something up for discussion. But again, I'd like to thank the city council for, you know, looking out for the people here in San Carlos. Thank you.
Thank you, Kit. Thank you for sharing your best practices with respect to your business. That much appreciated.
All right, so we will go on to the public hearing, consideration of adopting an urgency ordinance, extending urgency ordinance 1571, imposing interim regulations for protected trees, chapter 1818 landscaping, and temporarily replacing section 1818070, trees of title 18 for a period of 10 months and 15 days from duly noticed public hearing meeting. And presenting this is Andrea Martisic, Principal Planner. Welcome, Andrea.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council, Andrea Martisic, Principal Planner. The next item before you this evening is a request for an extension to the interim urgency ordinance regarding protected trees. This was originally adopted by the council on June 14th of this year. If adopted this evening, the urgency ordinance would be extended for a period of 10 months and 15 days. For this presentation, I will provide a brief background of the item, as well as an updated task that are currently underway. Staff will then be available for questions from council prior to public comment. On May 10th of this year, the city council held a study session on protected trees, which included reviewing penalty fees and replanting policies from neighboring jurisdictions. At that time, there was general consensus from the city council to move forward with a comprehensive update of the existing protected tree ordinance. Council also expressed interest in moving forward with an urgency ordinance to restrict protected tree removals and pruning while staff worked on this permanent ordinance. On June 14th, the interim urgency ordinance was adopted for a period of 45 days, with the ability to extend it for a longer period of time. It's very common for cities to request an extension past the 45 days in order to address whatever issue the urgency ordinance is trying to solve. This is the request before you this evening. And again, it is to adopt an extension of the urgency ordinance for a period of 10 months and 15 days. The extension of the urgency ordinance will allow the more restrictive interim ordinance, which is currently in effect, to continue for a maximum period of 10 months and 15 days. This will allow the city to research and prepare a more comprehensive permanent ordinance for your consideration in the future. Without this extension, the urgency ordinance would expire, and the city would not be able to stop or slow down tree removals for the reasons that are currently allowed under this temporary ordinance. As a reminder, the urgency ordinance recognizes that there's an immediate threat of excessive tree removal to the unique character of the city's neighborhoods. It also provides specific guidance for assessing the level of risk or health for the trees. In addition, staff wants to ensure that there's enough time for both public input and education, as well as time to thoroughly research the direction received at the last council hearing. This will ensure that the proposed permanent ordinance encompasses the best practices that the council would like included, as well as allow time for staff to research and present accompanying implementation strategies. One item that I would like to clarify before moving on is in regard to penalty fees. This was a question that came up, and I wanted to add some additional information to it. The urgency ordinance as adopted notes that any illegal removal will result in a fine not to exceed $5,000 or the appraised value of the tree, whichever is greater. And the language is a bit confusing because it's referencing both the not to exceed amount, while also referencing whichever amount is greater. And the not to exceed language implies that the penalty fee could actually be less than $5,000. However, that was not the intention. So just to summarize the current urgency ordinance, if a tree is removed without permits, the appraised value of the tree would determine the resulting penalty. So if a tree was appraised at less than or equal to $5,000, the penalty would also be $5,000. However, if the tree was appraised at greater than $5,000, the penalty would be the appraised value of the tree. And we will work to clean up this language to make it more clear as part of the permanent ordinance when we bring it back to you. Since adoption of the urgency ordinance, staff has been working on several tasks. The first of that is the creation of a website for tree removal, which would also include frequently asked questions. Pending the outcome of tonight's hearing, we will finalize the citywide postcard, which is anticipated to be sent out within two weeks. And this postcard will outline a few of the major changes of the urgency ordinance, as well as guide people to the city's webpage and solicit feedback for the upcoming permanent ordinance. We are also planning a spotlight newsletter later this summer or for early fall, as well as posting a weekly list of approved tree removals for the public to view. Additionally, staff is also working on a public outreach plan, which will include, also include the planning commission meetings and meetings with the public. We are conducting best practices research for cities within the county. We are looking at streamlining our city processes, including updating the application forms and notice templates to comply with the new requirements for noticing. We're continuing to work on scoping and budgeting of the project with the city arborist. And finally, we're also working on preparation of an administrative guidance document for detailed information for the public, as well as to help with decision making. In terms of next steps, this will look familiar from the last meeting. If adopted, we'll continue to work on the protected tree ordinance per your direction. In addition to public outreach, we would bring the draft ordinance to the planning commission for a study session, as well as recommendation to city council. The budget we're anticipating would be utilized from our existing professional services budget. The original timeline for this project was approximately four months, and we are now about one month into that. So we are anticipating returning to council with a permanent ordinance for consideration in late October. Staff is recommending that city council extend the interim urgency ordinance for protected trees. And as I mentioned, we are anticipating coming back in October, which is of course earlier than the 10-month, 15-day maximum limit. However, we are requesting the maximum allowable extension time to accommodate any unforeseen challenges that may arise. And with that, I'm available for any questions. We also have Rucha Danday, our associate planner, available, and Stephanie Nisich, who is our city obtained arborist, to answer any technical questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea, for the update and the recommendation. Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Andrea, thanks for the presentation. The only question I had was on the fine and the penalty. I know you mentioned that you're, and we emailed on that earlier today, and I appreciate you sort of clarifying that. The, I know you're going to sort of tend to sort of update and fix it in the permanent ordinance. Do you feel like the current urgency ordinance is clear enough to do what we want to do with that? To have that $5,000 minimum, essentially the way it's written? Or do we need to do something in the short term to change that?
I think for the time being, it is clear enough because it has the clause of whichever is greater. I don't think it's necessarily, you know, it could be written better, definitely. But the whichever is greater clause does allow us to charge more if the tree is valued at more. And it's, and if you direct us that it's just basically a policy that it's a minimum grid, or sorry, $5,000, then we could use that too until the ordinance is updated.
Just to add to that, the, I'm satisfied with the language, especially since Andrea pointed out that this staff's interpretation is the way that clears up the ambiguity. You know, so it's now it's on the record that that's what staff's interpretation of that language is. And then we'll just work on making it clear in the permanent ordinance.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Dugan, and then Councilmember Collins?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Andrea. Appreciate the work on this. Quick question, you know, my concern the first time around was just, you know, the appraised value of a tree is just such an unknown. I did want to get a sense of what the magnitude or range of possible amounts that could be. And I'm wondering if, you know, if there's a better understanding now of kind of the range of what an average tree in San Carlos would be appraised at? Or have there been any recent examples so we can just get a sense of what kind of fee we're affixing to this thing?
I apologize for not bringing that up. We have not started that yet. But what we are planning on doing is asking our arborist to appraise several trees around town as a case study and bring those back to you to show what the varying amounts are. So that is something we plan on bringing back. We have not had an illegal removal since the last hearing, so no new ones have been appraised. But we will also include that information if any do occur prior to coming back.
Okay, I appreciate that. And if someone did illegally remove a tree and it got appraised at $200,000, would they have the right under this ordinance to appeal that to the council?
Yes, yes, they would. They would. There's a general right of appeal of an administrative decision like that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Andrea, for your report. I'm reasonably satisfied that this ordinance is headed in the right direction. I just wonder if, is it appropriate now, or should I reach out to you separately in terms of suggestions for non-protected trees that ought to be added to our list?
I think either way, it's fine. I'm happy to discuss offline if you prefer. But as you, as you're aware, we're trying to do a pretty comprehensive ordinance. So we're definitely welcoming any ideas you might have.
Why don't I, why don't I email you separately?
Great.
It's not a long list, so.
No problem. Thank you.
All right. All right. I haven't seen any additional questions from council, so we'll move to public comment. Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to comment?
Yes, we do have one hand at the moment. Ken Castle, you should be able to unmute.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. I certainly support this extension. I only wish that this temporary measure had occurred six weeks ago, and there would still be a 60-foot-high redwood tree standing in my neighbor's yard, providing shade for our patio. There isn't a day that I look out the back that I don't feel a gut-wrenching scenario in missing that tree. And really, it should never have happened in the first place. I think what the city should really consider are some other measures here. Number one, in connection with whatever new measure is adopted, who would people call if they see an active cutter? If there's an active cutter that seems not to be a legitimate tree removal company, who do they call? What kind of response does the city have? There are other cities that will deploy an arborist, or in some cases, the police department, to stop the illegal removal of a tree. So rather than just hover in the office, city office, and ask for neighbors to take pictures and submit emails, what's going to happen? How does that get resolved? The second thing is, how do you look at the situation of unlicensed tree cutters that are out there all the time, that do not have the proper contractor's licensing for removing trees? I think also the bigger picture of these SB 9 and 10, where we could see all sorts of new ADUs and development in our neighborhoods would have a huge impact on trees, as many city councils throughout the Bay Area have discussing, have been discussing. So we really need to have something in place. We don't need that additional type of development. We really need more canopies and not densities. And it's really time to look at environment and supporting and protecting our existing neighborhoods and not allowing this kind of removal to happen. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ken. Crystal, are there any other members of the community who wish to make comment?
No, there are no further hands.
Okay. All right. All right. At this point, I would entertain a motion to close public comment period.
I ask one question, if I can, just to follow up on, do we, I'm just curious if we, I don't know that we talked about that sort of active cutting issue that Mr. Castle mentions. I'd be curious to understand kind of what that might be. And I'd be curious to understand kind of what, you know, do we have a process where if you're with licensing for tree cutting, do we do something like that within the city? Is the, how do you, how do we control for that issue?
So Jeff, could we just, or Greg, can we just clarify procedurally where we are in the conversation? Because I had, we go to, we go from public comment to closing the public comment to council discussion, so.
Yeah, I think the, Councilmember Rack, would you like the question, your question's answered before the public hearings closed, or would you rather have it after the public hearing?
I'm fine either way. I just didn't, I didn't realize we were not doing questions anymore. So I'm happy to, whatever is the proper protocol.
Yeah, I mean, this is probably a question, so I could do it now. On the code enforcement side, if there's somebody cutting down a tree illegally, I think in San Carlos, if it's during business hours, a call to the building department is probably the way to go, because they could put a stop work on, on the, stop the work from being, any further work being done, depending on when it is, you know, when they catch them doing an illegal cut like that. If it's after hours, it's probably a police response. And then if somebody does do that, I just want to remind the public that if we're not, the remedies in this ordinance aren't the only remedies that the city has against someone who does an illegal cut, because that's a misdemeanor violation of the municipal code. And that's a $1,000 fine and potentially six months in jail if there's somebody intentionally cutting down a tree in violation of our ordinance. So there's other remedies we have. I think that's, so it's not just an administrative remedy. There's also criminal remedies available. Have I answered your question?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll move to close public hearing on this matter?
I can, I can.
All right. Dugan made the motion. Collins seconded. Crystal, if you can call the roll, please.
Okay. Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor Parmalohian?
Yes. All right. Any further council discussion or comment? Okay, we'll entertain a motion for the ordinance.
Madam Mayor, just for the record, since this is an urgency ordinance, it requires four-fifths vote of the council to be extended.
Thank you, Greg. I saw that in the packet. Thank you for the reminder.
I'll move. I move to adopt ordinance number-
1572.
1572, an urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of San Carlos, pursuant to government code section 65858B, extending urgency ordinance 1571, imposing interim regulations for protected trees, chapter 18.18. imposing interim regulations for protected trees, Chapter eighteen point eighteen, dash landscaping and temporarily replacing Section eighteen point eighteen point zero seven zero, dash trees of Title eighteen for a period of ten months and fifteen days from the duly, duly noticed public hearing meeting.
All right. Is there a second? All right. So we have Rack with a motion and Collins with a second. Uh, Crystal, can you call, uh, any further comment for those wishing to comment on this? All right, seeing none. Uh, Crystal, if you could call the roll.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
And Mayor Parmalohan.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so this next item, item eleven B, new business. Uh, we'll be discussing consideration of adopting a resolution at mending the parklet outdoor dining program to require that parklets on the 600 block of Laurel Street remain within the boundaries of each business's respective storefront. And that businesses on the 600 block of Laurel must remain open at least five days a week in order to operate a parklet. I also understand that we will, um, this will include, um, uh, moving the farmer's market from its current industrial arts location, uh, to the Laurel Street location. Uh, that wasn't called out. I just wanted to make sure everybody's clear on that. And Eric Adam Aronson, Economic Development and Housing Manager, will be making a presentation. Welcome, Adam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'll be giving the presentation tonight on mending the parklet outdoor dining program on the 600 block of Laurel Street. So just to provide a quick background to remind everyone, the temporary closure was based on the state's declaration of emergency and findings that was necessary for the safety and protection of persons who used that portion of the street during the closure. On June fourteenth, the City Council approved Resolution number twenty twenty-one zero four-nine, which extended the closure and parklet program to September first, twenty twenty-two. And before we move on, I just want to further clarify with the graphic here that this is just regarding the 600 block of Laurel Street that we are discussing tonight. So there are concerns that have been raised on the 600 block. A number of businesses primarily in the retail sector are experiencing a decrease in revenues due to the reduction of storefront parking. There are also concerns regarding underutilized parklets on the block. These are businesses that are closed while their parklets are, parklets are continuing to take up parking spaces. And then as well as this, there is the anticipated relocation of the San Carlos Farmer's Market to the 600 block of Laurel Street. As the council will remember, the city has recently taken over ownership of the Farmer's Market. It was previously under the control of the Chamber of Commerce. And most recently, it's been located on the east side. But the chamber has reported that the Farmer's Market is seeing declining revenue and, um, booth operators in that area. So the hope is that relocating it to the downtown will help to revive the Farmer's Market and bring back attendees and booths as well. And the 600 block is thought of as the best location for that as it will have the most space both on the street and in parking spaces, and it could use the Wheeler, Wheeler Plaza surface parking lot as well for booths. So on July sixth, the council's downtown subcommittee met and recommended that the below changes be implemented on the 600 block by August eighth, twenty twenty-one. First, any business with a parklet on the 600 block of Laurel Street should be required to restrict the size of their parklet to the length of their storefront. Second, only businesses that are open for a minimum of five days a week can have a parklet or continue their current parklet operations. So under this proposal, if a business is only open four days a week, they would not be allowed to have a parklet. And the reasons for these changes would be to prevent parklets from extending in front of neighboring businesses, to decrease the number of underutilized parklets, and to increase the number of storefront parking spaces on the 600 block. So with that, the alternatives available to the council include, first, to direct staff to restrict parklet sizes on the 600 block of Laurel Street to each business's respective storefront and require that businesses remain open at least five days a week to have a parklet by August eighth, twenty twenty-one. And then two, keep the parklet program as is on the 600 block or provide staff with alternative direction. With that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Adam. Any questions from council? Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and, uh, I appreciate the work, uh, the subcommittee and staff have done on this important matter. Um, quick questions. So under, you know, be great, uh, to, you know, uh, the Farmer's Market, very important. I think the 600 block of Laurel, uh, likely will breathe, uh, uh, new life back into our Farmer's Market. Uh, fully supportive of that. Uh, but is it really the case we have to just pick one location for the Farmer's Market? Um, it seems to me having it, uh, back on Laurel Street, uh, for, you know, maybe the majority of the time, but occasionally putting it back in the Arts District or maybe trying out South Laurel, you know, using it as kind of the economic driver that it can be, uh, to shines, you know, highlight other areas of town as we have attempted to do. Um, is there any restriction, you know, do we really have to just pick one location for the Farmer's Market or can it be, uh, more flexible?
I can speak with regards to the, the east side specifically. The chamber reported their data on how the market was doing over there. And just for comparison's sake, in twenty nineteen, when the market was downtown, it was seen about $40,000 in income each year and had about fifty-six vendors. And now it's down to losing about $10,000 a year and only sixteen vendors. So the chamber doesn't believe that, at least on the east side, the market will be able to continue in that location. Uh, they're seeing more and more vendors drop off with each market. Um, with South Laurel, I'm not so certain. Um, it's not something we've tried out yet. Um, and I would have to, you know, maybe bring that to Stephen G, the Public Works Director, to see if physically it's possible to move it back and forth between locations.
I see. But programmatically, are there issues with it being in a different location for one week versus the normal location?
Sure. I can speak up to that. Um, Amy Newby, Parks Integration Director. Um, you know, first and foremost, I, um, would like to see the priority be the success of the Farmer's Market. And what we've seen is that moving the market has, um, affected the success of the Farmer's Market in general, the attendance, the vendor participation. Um, not only is revenue significantly down and not supporting the, the program itself.
No, no, I understand it's not working the best in, in, in the arts and, you know, uh, on the east side. But, you know, if we have it at Laurel for eight weeks in a row, is there a programmatic issue why we couldn't put it back there for one week and then bring it back to Laurel? Um, just as a way of kind of shining a spotlight on different parts of town? It's not a, yeah, maybe business will be down a little bit that week. But, um, you know, is there something about the way our Farmer's Market operates that we couldn't put it somewhere else for one week occasionally?
Uh, we could. It would be just coordinating logistics with everyone. So that includes all of the vendors, it includes attendees, it includes, uh, our public work support staff, um, our onsite staff as well. So I think it would take a lot of coordination to jump around from location to location, even on a eight-week or ten-week basis, um, or even just to do it for one week. And I'm actually not sure if it would be worth it, um, because it's really hard to get the community and get people on board for where it is, what time it is. And if we were to move it one day and they show up at the location it has been, I think there just could be that miscommunication, misinformation, um, that people then would be frustrated.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Um, and I did want to make a point that we have surveyed our local communities who've continued to operate their Farmer's Market, either through the pandemic or resumed, um, similar to when San Carlos resumed the market in the same location, the same time. And, um, they're not seeing the drop-off that we've seen.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'd just add, uh, one quick comment, and that would be that the, the vendors would definitely prefer to have a fixed, uh, time and location, um, so that the market could be consistently marketed to the public for, uh, their ability to attend and, uh, purchase, uh, goods from their businesses.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, and thank you, Adam, for the presentation. Um, I was gonna ask about the Farmer's Market too, but that's been covered, so thank you. Um, my first question then is, how are business owners on the 600 block? Were they, were they notified at all that we were having this discussion this evening?
Yeah, they have been reached out to. The chamber in particular has been reaching out to individual businesses to let them know about these changes and the relocation of the Farmer's Market as well.
Okay. Um, all right. So I, um, I met with, I, I assume all of us have been meeting with our local downtown business owners lately. Um, I met with several, um, just a few days ago. And they suggested, um, kind of one amendment to the language that, um, I'm wondering if you considered at all. Um, they suggested, um, that restaurants have to be open five days a week for both lunch and dinner. Um, and I think they were kind of drawing the parallel of, you know, if you're using a parklet during the daytime, that you should be, um, serving food. Do you, have you, did, did staff consider that at all as an option to include?
We only discussed days of operation. We didn't get to hours of operation. But if it's something the council wanted us to include, we certainly could do that.
Okay. Thank you, Adam. I guess during the discussion, I'd be interested in hearing my colleagues' thoughts on that. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so I've not seen any additional questions, um, from council on this. Um, Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to make comment?
Uh, we have closed the public comment. Oh, actually, I'm sorry. Nope, I'm on the wrong item. Yes, we do have two. Hands up. David Tuzman, you should be able to unmute.
Hello.
There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hey, my name is David Tuzman. I'm a resident of San Carlos, live near downtown. I love the, uh, open streets and parklet programs. And I'm a bit confused by the suggestion to, uh, limit extending the parklets beyond their own business for the sake of increasing parking spaces because I thought the streets were closed. So what, how are cars supposed to get to those parking spaces? It doesn't seem useful. And I'm arguing that, that cars shouldn't be able to get there because it's great that people can walk. Um, so that's kind of confusing. I wonder if that could be clarified. Uh, that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you, David. Um, just real quick, we're talking about the 600 block, which is currently open to traffic, not the 700 block, which is not open to traffic. All right. Uh, additional, uh, members? Crystal?
Yes. Um, the next speaker. I'm gonna have to apologize. That's a little, oh, he just dropped his heads. Uh, Will Stoll, you're up next. You should be able to unmute.
Hello, everybody. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect, perfect. Um, I completely understand and agree with many of, uh, uh, Barry's concerns. I, I know he's one of the louder voices around this matter, uh, dynasty cleaners. Um, I've spoken to him myself about this. Uh, uh, but a dry cleaner losing revenue has very little right now to do with the loss of parking in any area. It really has a lot to do with dry cleaners losing revenue with people no longer being required to dress up and go to work. Um, you know, like, we have to take these other things into account. Uh, the pandemic has drastically changed many businesses and we really need to, as businesses and the business owner myself, adapt to the way the world is changing. Um, I really like the idea of the Farmer's Market coming back to Laurel Street. And with Sunday being the day it's closed right now, it sounds like a really great idea to bring it back anyway. Uh, so the 600 block sounds like a great place to put that. And, uh, somebody already mentioned this, and then, and I'm really glad they did, but any kind of event, it really needs to always have the same location, day and time. Otherwise, it would just fail. Uh, it doesn't matter what the type of event is because people just get confused. Um, but at the end of the day, uh, the entire community needs to be considered for these types of decisions and not just a couple loud voices, you know, reminds, reminds me of Twitter. Uh, so we need to avoid making decisions based on limited feedback. But, uh, I do believe that businesses that are taking up parklets that are not in front of their business, that does sound like a very unfair thing. So those are my comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have Bara Matelagani. Um, you should be able to unmute. There you go.
Uh, good evening to everybody. Uh, first of all, I wanna, uh, thank you guys for taking time to speak with some of the business owners downtown. I, and I am sure that every one of you guys understood the situation that we are in. And thank you for taking all the comment that you heard from us and putting it in action. And the only thing I want to add to this is if you could be kind enough to consider the restaurants that are open five days be lunch and dinner. Again, there's a lot of parking spaces that are being wasted right now that we'd like to, uh, kind of use it for, uh, the businesses that are open. Thank you. And again, uh, Will, I appreciate your comment about the dry cleaner. Uh, the dry cleaner are doing much better than they did before, and we are going the right direction like, like most other businesses. Thanks, everybody, for your help.
Thank you, Barry.
Thank you. Next up is Debbie Batoci. You should be able to unmute.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to ask a question to be sure I understand. I do go to that block a lot. And, uh, because I am older and not able to walk as much, I do need to park down there. So, um, the businesses I regularly go to are not the restaurants. There are the other businesses like the Bagel Shop or the Olive Oil Store. So will you still be able to drive down there to go to the other businesses that are not restaurants? Or is it just gonna be closed?
Thank you, Debbie. Again, we're talking about the 600 block, which is currently open to vehicle traffic. The 700 block, um, where it starts with Didams and, um, ends near, uh, some of the restaurants near, um, past south of Bank of America is closed to vehicular traffic. We're talking about the 600 block, which is currently open to vehicular traffic.
Thank you.
And there are no further hands from the public.
Thank you. All right. Um, so we'll move into comment, um, and discussion. Uh, Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually had a residual question, which I guess will roll into my comments. I'll just do it all at once. But my, my final question is, I, it's kind of a common too to kick it off is I, I was trying, and I know we're, you know, moving fast here and there's a lot of moving parts and this is a very complicated area. So I appreciate the subcommittee's efforts and, and staff and all of our, uh, you know, cycling with the community. Uh, we got a lot to work on here. Um, I was struck, you know, of, of all the things that, you know, I think are on a list, uh, to be discussed and, and dealt with. Uh, this struck me as fairly modest, uh, you know, just a, a very small first step in, in tweaking our program uh, to, uh, better suit, uh, uh, more folks' needs. So I guess my, like, for example, I was surprised the, um, uh, it, it just seems to me a parklet naturally should be limited to the width of the storefront. That just seems natural to me. Um, I, you know, I understood we kind of allowed spillover when the, um, uh, restaurants couldn't have indoor seating. That made sense, but that's no longer the case. I'm just wondering, was there, is there any particular, um, reason we didn't apply, uh, this restriction of the width of the storefronts to, uh, to all parklets in town, 700 block and elsewhere? Uh, it just seems like a pretty obvious, uh, principle that, that could be applied generally. But maybe there's specific issues or matters that, that I'm not aware of.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. I think at, at this time, uh, what I'd like to do is call in, uh, Councilmember Collins as a member of the subcommittee. Um, I understand this came through a subcommittee, so would love to hear your perspective on this proposal.
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor, and I think maybe some of what I say may, uh, give some, uh, provide some answers and give some context to, to what we're doing. So over the last, uh, several weeks, owners of the 600, uh, block businesses met separately with me and I believe all the other council members to express their concerns about traffic and mobility on their block. When we reopened the block after its brief initial closer, closure last June, there were many parking spaces freed up. And that allowed them to continue providing service to their customers. And I'm speaking specifically of the non-restaurant businesses. Now, over the course of the last year, many of those parking spaces were gradually taken over by parklets as several businesses expanded their, uh, outdoor footprint. They also pointed out that some seniors have mobility issues and some people have disabilities. And it's not realistic to expect them to use either the Wheeler or Samtrans garages and then walk a great distance to the businesses on Laurel Street. Finally, they told us that they wouldn't mind having the Sunday Farmer's Market on their block and as you've seen in the proposal, as they feel it would actually help many of their businesses. And the block is already closed on Sundays anyway. So at our subcommittee meeting, we heard from Chambers Amy Buckmaster. And she pointed out that many more vendors would provide, would participate rather in the farmer's market if it were to be returned to Laurel Street. As may have been struggling and at the temporary location on the east side. Now, since the restaurants are allowed to full capacity indoor dining now, it makes sense to us that having them limit their parking width to the actual storefrontage will not substantially impact their businesses and will in fact restore many of the parking places in front of those stores that really need them for their day-to-day operations. Finally, I heard from a couple of restaurant owners on the 600 blocks who said that they were actually in full support of these proposed changes. Finally, as a footnote, I would add that I think these modifications, as John pointed out, are modest. And they may also serve as a guideline to us at some point in the future if we want to review the status of the 700 block. At this point, I think it might be a good idea to see if Adam wants to add his thoughts. Maybe tell me anything I missed.
Thank you, Ron. We covered a lot in that meeting. I do think we, I think you pretty much covered everything around, you know, I think the initial focus and what we wanted to do was to work with the 600 block and not try to bite off more than we can chew. And I mean, there's certainly some things that we need to look at for the long term in terms of the safety of the parklets, some of the electrical and other things, since they are going to be potentially there for another year plus. So, you know, doing those sort of longer-term activities are part of the things I think we want to sort of tackle in the next round of activities. I think we just got an invite, a doodle poll that's sort of have a next meeting of the subcommittees, sort of, you know, as we continue to kind of work through, looking at sort of short-term, long-term, and, you know, sort of, I think we've talked about maybe, you know, sort of what Laurel looks like permanently. And so we thought this would be a good thing to sort of tackle in the short term as moderate. Brought the farmer's market back and I think, you know, restored some parking that was not, for parklets that weren't being used.
And I might just add to that, that the subcommittee had asked us, the staff, to continue to work with them over the summer months with the goal of having some potential more midterm-type changes, including some adjustments. You know, as Adam just mentioned, how we might do inspections and whatnot for safety, health and safety on the existing structures and those kinds of things, as well as a number of other issues that we're working with the subcommittee on, ready for the council at one of their first two meetings back after recess. So we'll have a broader list of potential recommendations from the subcommittee for you at that time.
Okay, well, thank you. You know, I know a lot of work has gone into this, so I certainly appreciate that. And so, you know, ultimately, I think we will need to limit the width of all of our parklets. Maybe now's not the time. It's unfortunate. You know, it's gonna be well over a month before we revisit anything with the next two meetings, summer furlough here. But anyway, so my only other comment would be, I'm very supportive of this. I think the five-day-a-week limit is appropriate as well. And I would support applying that for businesses. They need to be open at lunch and dinner. I would support that. I think those parklets do take up a lot of parking. And if they're not being used economically, there's gotta, we gotta find a balance to this, which kind of, you know, I'm looking forward to engaging in this midterm plan because there's just so much meaty stuff. And I think some other low-hanging fruit we should deal with as soon as we can. You know, at some point, we're gonna have to talk about, you know, are we charging rents for these parklets, et cetera? And with regard to the farmer's market, fully supportive. I think it's great. You know, we have a wonderful farmer's market. It's sad that people have had a hard time finding it on our east side. That, you know, I was there many times. I think it's a great location. I've enjoyed my time there and there's so many great businesses there. So it's sad that it has to leave there to get revived. I do think it is a great fit on the 600 block. I think it'll bring even more vibrancy downtown. You know, and I get it, there, you know, marketing says leave it all in one spot. People can find it easily. So, you know, not an optimal business decision, but I like the idea of keeping a strong farmer's market and then maybe considering lending that energy to different parts of our town, whether that be back on the east side, whether that be the southern stretch of Laurel, just to bring activity and share that love a bit around town. But I understand there's some practical constraints around that, but I just, I just throw that out there. That's all I have. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a question. I know for sort of discussion point or question point, but I know the Vice Mayor brought up about lunch and, you know, Councilmember Dugan did the same. I guess what I don't know is if we were to make that change today, what businesses are affected by that? We're sort of giving them a potentially a shorter notice. We're not, so I don't know who that affects. And so I think it's hard for me to make that decision without knowing that. Are we telling a couple places that, you know, they just have the orange barriers? Or are we telling people they have to take, they may potentially have to take down stuff that they spent thousands of dollars on to construct parklets? And so I'd like to, to me, I'd rather, I'm not opposed to it. I like to understand kind of what the impact is before we would make that decision. So someone can, and if anyone knows what, if from staff can tell me what businesses that might be. I just don't know who's open at lunch versus just at dinner for restaurants.
Adam or Jeff, could you address this? There's not that many parklets down there from what I recall, so you know, off the top of your head?
Yeah, I believe there's only one and it's Number Five Kitchen. And just reviewing, I believe there, whether you do the five days a week for lunch and dinner or just five days a week, that's the only business it would apply to. Assuming everyone's online hours are correct.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Adam, for that. I did walk downtown today to kind of check that out. And that was my, what I found as well is pretty much everyone was open at lunchtime today except for Number Five Kitchen. So it sounds like maybe that extra language might not be necessary. Maybe that's something that, and I agree about the noticing too, Adam, I think that's a concern. So maybe that's something that the subcommittee could, you know, add to their list over the summer to take a look at or, you know, monitor the situation. I also wanted to just make sure that we're keeping an eye, I, we're speaking of Number Five Kitchen and that owner had written in to us and he has a very narrow storefront. So I would just like to make sure that we're sensitive to the fact that his frontage is different and unique than other stores or than other restaurants down there. So, you know, I, the sidewalk dining permit program is still open too. Is that correct, Adam, as an option?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So I just wanted to put that out there. And then with regard to the farmer's market, you know, I think that it did really serve an important role during the pandemic to bring customers to a new area of town. I thought it was really important to spread our support of businesses far and wide in San Carlos. And I too am disappointed that it's not being successful in that area. I've shopped down there. I've really enjoyed it. I thought it had a really fun vibe. And it's disappointing that it has not been more successful. So, you know, it does sound like it needs a new location in order to be successful. But I, as a discussion point, I just, I would like to put it out there that I'd like to, you know, continue to think and brainstorm with the chamber about new ways to support our industrial arts area. It is a very important part of town with, you know, really awesome businesses. And, you know, I know our art and wine fair was canceled. You know, maybe if the chamber was interested or, you know, we have Wendy Chitino now on our staff. Maybe, you know, we could do a, if the businesses approached us for a, you know, wine and beer walk or something this fall, we can certainly look for ways that the city can help support, you know, other events in that area of town. You know, working on supporting the Horsepower Car Show. Maybe there's some kind of pop-up market that they would like down there. I think that, you know, continuing to be creative and looking for ways to support all of our businesses, including in the industrial arts area is really important. So thank you for that.
Right. Thank you, Vice Mayor McDowell. So from my perspective, I'd like to weigh in on this. So I appreciate the subcommittee bringing this to council tonight. You know, I always look back at our mission and values and, you know, we have, you know, very clearly stated we want to create a business-friendly community. So I appreciate, you know, the discussion here. You know, the street closure in its, you know, current form, we've lost 150 parking spots. I appreciate one of the members of the public calling in, Debbie, to talk about her personal experience with mobility. I've heard that from a number of our community members. And these retailers have been impacted, not only on the 600 block, but I want to clarify also the 700 block. Some of them have lost revenues up to 70%. And they have families that they need to support and they're valuable. And their businesses are viable, even in these online purchasing days. So I think what I'm hearing from them loud and clear is what they need is more parking during the daytime because that's what their business requires. Their customers have told them this. They've told them that they can't get to their businesses. They circle the block too many times and they drive, they drive on. So I'm in support of opening up parking spots on the 600 block that are directly in front of the establishments. And because they are dependent upon daytime population, I think those restaurants that offer, you know, that are in business to serve lunch and dinner, it's reasonable that they have a, that they have a parklet in front of their, their frontage, directly in front. But those that don't, I seriously question the fairness to the retailers in terms of getting that parking. So again, restaurants and retailers are back at 100% capacity. But the thing that's hurting the retailers right now is really that lack of daytime parking. So, so that would be kind of my perspective in terms of farmer's market. You know, my recollection again is it was moved to industrial arts because of the street closure. And we couldn't have events with the current configuration. I appreciate that it also needs to be revenue generating and operating a loss. If we can't attract vendors and we can't attract customers, there's really no market. So I appreciate the need to move it back to Laurel Street. And I'm also, you know, intrigued by Councilmember Dugan's requirement, suggestion that at some point, perhaps like with all of our other programming, charging the restaurants for the encroachments. You know, this is something fairly typical that's done. You know, there's a fee for a parklet. Right now, there's really no incentive for anybody to take out another parklet since they're offered as a subsidy. So maybe that could be something the subcommittee looks at over the long term. And possibly even, as we've done in the past, think about a subsidy or some sort of grant program to the retailers who've been suffering as a result of this program with those tax dollars. So those are my perspectives. I'll call in Councilmember Collins and then we'll go to Councilmember Rack.
My only comment was that I like Sarah's idea about the beer and wine lockdown in the industrial area. Other than that, I'll save any other comments I have until after, until we're ready to vote.
All right, Councilmember Rack?
I was gonna add the same thing. That was something I was, I appreciate that suggestion. And I think there's some opportunities there to highlight some of the businesses there, but also in other parts of town as well. I think working with the chamber and the parking rack would be a good opportunity to look at those potential events.
Okay, so, all right, are there, so there's no further discussion? So is, at this point, I don't see any hands up, so we'll entertain a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll move to adopt Resolution 2021 dash?
Sixty-eight?
Sixty-eight, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos amending the parkland outdoor dining program to require that parklets on the 600 block of Laurel remain within the boundaries of each business's respective storefront and that the businesses on the 600 block on Laurel Street must remain open for at least five days a week in order to operate a parklet.
Is there a second for that? And I noticed, Ron, you didn't mention lunch, so are you making them?
Yes, to include remaining open for lunch and dinner, is that an accurate addition?
I mean, it doesn't really matter, right? Because it's
I, I said it does.
I'm sorry?
I, I think it does matter because these businesses that are suffering in the retail, they need the daytime parking.
I think it's one, one parking space, Madam Mayor.
Understood. It's actually, I think it's more than that, Adam, with all due respect, so.
I would agree.
I'm fine, I'm fine either way. I just thought that Adam had said that the business was closed. Wasn't open five days a week, so the one we were talking about, it didn't matter for that particular business. But I'm happy to support whatever the council wants to do on that one.
I still support that lunch restriction as well. So it sounds like we might have a consensus on that. Sarah, did you go back on that?
No, I, I, I support it as well. I think that daytime parking is really important. So I'll second the motion.
Thank you. All right, Crystal, if you could call the roll?
Madam Mayor, I wanted to make just one comment. I'm going to vote in favor of this tonight. I think that this is really great work coming out of our subcommittee. I want to thank Adam and Ron for their work. I think this is a great example of compromise that we're going to be dealing with a lot in our future. And I wanted to thank all of the merchants and retailers and restaurants for reaching out to us over the last couple of weeks and almost couple of years now. I think I just want to appreciate everyone's efforts on this. So thank you.
Councilmember Collins?
Yeah, thank you, Sarah. And Madam Mayor, I just want to extend my thanks to all the business owners who reached out to us on the council. I think it's always important for us to be responsive to everyone in the community, whether they operate a business or live here, as to what their concerns are. And then finally, I would also like to thank the work that staff did on this. They came up with some good suggestions. They worked with us. And they always give us some great options to think about. So there's a lot of people to be grateful to, you know, this doesn't all come out of Adam's and my brains. So there's a lot of collaborative effort that goes into this process.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins. I appreciate that. I also want to just chime in here again, again, it's about working together. That is so important as a community. And I know for these business owners, it's not easy to participate in this process. It's kind of unwieldy, but I appreciate your courage and your willingness to do so and share your stories and ask for what you need. And for all those on this call to respond in kind. Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just want to sort of reiterate the, I think it's a good example of compromise and everyone working together, both the business community and the council and staff and everyone. And look, we made changes at the last minute here in terms of the lunch option, which I think, you know, I'm certainly supportive of. And I think that's, you know, I think it's a good example of how we can work together to, I think, hopefully have a win-win for everybody.
Thank you. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just want to echo everyone else's comments. In particular, really appreciate our local businesses, all of them, reaching out, retailers, restaurants, everyone downtown. You know, it's, we're working our way through this. It's a measured process. We're taking it a step at a time. We have a lot more work to do. There's a lot more things that will make that midterm plan, I think we are calling it. And I look forward to that work. And I would just hope that, you know, I would encourage the businesses to keep letting us know your thoughts and how we can help make these programs work for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Parmalohan?
Yes. So at this time, I'd like to propose a 10-minute break and reconvene at 9:31. Anyone opposed?
Nope.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
PM 10. The M ten.
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we'll move on to item new business eleven C, consideration of adopting resolution authorizing an amendment to the law enforcement services agreement with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Offices, Office for the Downtown Services Unit Program for fiscal year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, approving a full-time community service officer and increasing the appropriation by eighty-two thousand, funded by the supplemental law enforcement services fund. Uh, this presentation will be made by, um, uh, Captain Bell. Uh, you're on a roll tonight. Uh, Chief Bell, welcome back for your encore.
Good to see you guys again. Thank you for having me. All right, so, uh, the purpose of this presentation is to provide a summary of activity for the downtown service unit, often referred to as DSU. The DSU was created in October two thousand nineteen to work within the expanding downtown core in the city of San Carlos. The mission was to work with business owners, city officials, and the general public to promote a safe place to live, work, and learn. The DSU is dedicated to build partnerships, uh, with the various stakeholders in the downtown area with an emphasis on problem solving, safety, and a positive experience when downtown. During the pilot, the deputy always had access to a patrol vehicle and that deputy was always on overtime. Alternate patrol techniques such as foot and motorcycle patrol were used to establish a highly visible, professional, interactive, and progressive police presence in the heart of San Carlos economic and entertainment core. We also, uh, deployed plainclothes operations, um, during, during COVID for, um, you know, just social distancing and that to report back like the observant report, um, which we were asked to do by, uh, council. The operating budget, originally it was, the pilot was authorized for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the fiscal year nineteen twenty. And the initial schedule was to be Thursday through Sunday, seven AM to five PM, using voluntary overtime staff signups, which means that if it went unfilled, we were, we did not, uh, mandatory someone to fill that shift. This schedule was proposed to be flexible and could be updated based on the needs of the community. The DSU pilot was extended with additional funding authorized by council for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. However, it was reduced to a hundred and fifty thousand due to COVID. Between the budget, budget reduction and the COVID nineteen pandemic impacting the overall footprint and daily profile of downtown, the DSU was deployed less frequently. Scheduled deployments were varied depending on factors such as weather and COVID nineteen risk level tiers. So the higher the level, the less people were assumedly out. During the pandemic, the less consistent downtown visitors present, the deputy sheriffs chose to exercise budget constraints by absorbing DSU responsibilities and roles through patrol units. The cost savings exercised in the winter months and more restrictive COVID nineteen risk level tiers allowed for operational flexibility and increased DSU presence as we started to open up and as we saw in the spring of twenty twenty-one. So this is by calendar year. And this chart outlines our data which reflects the DSU specific activity and does not include general patrol operations data. So for example, if a B deputy decided to just go walk downtown for an hour and get to know people or just get their face out there, that was not specific to the DSU unit and funding and overtime. So staff hours just means overtime hours assigned to the DSU capacity. And what is a business check? The, the purpose of a business check is to connect with the downtown merchants, visitors and city officials to identify any issues or problems that would affect the overall positive experience when downtown. And citations are primarily traffic enforcement citations and parking citations such as the metered parking or minutes and the illegal U-turns, um, in dead parking spaces are favorite, loud music, speeding, et cetera. So our recommendation, in mid-May, uh, we, we use the CSO, which is a community service officer, as an alternate and an innovative way to positively impact our community. We did this to experiment with a consistent, long-term, familiar face for the downtown. Although limited in duties, such as parking enforcement only or investigating property crimes with no suspect information and other patrol support functions, a CSO can build relationships, engage the community, just the same as a deputy sheriff. Some might be more receptive. We recognized the main quality of life issue we observed was traffic. We only have two motors work that work Monday through Friday in the entire town. And we all know how traffic is all around town. Adding specific traffic funds for downtown can focus on a directed patrol function using motors and off-road bikes. This will provide a larger pool of individuals within the sheriff's office that can work this overtime. With this increase, that will allow us for sixty-ten hour shifts for a motor deputy. We can split that up for the traffic portion and we could do two motors for four hours on a Saturday morning, as an example. Um, so our staff recommendation is to, uh, staff DSU with a full-time community service officer. And the benefits is the consistent base. They, they'll have that liaison between the entire sheriff's office. And so if there is an issue, then that person would come back to us, report out, gather data or even resources and redeploy. If there is an incident downtown while the, uh, CSO is down there, they have a radio that goes immediately to dispatch. So if he or she or that person needs to get help right away, um, that can be readily accessible. Um, and using a CSO is just, uh, a little bit cheaper, um, on a full-time basis, but, um, I, we got some great feedback, um, in his travels, um, that ninety percent of the individuals that he spoke to were, um, they loved, they love the idea of a familiar face and just didn't, you know, when you have someone on overtime, it's always somebody different, right? But for traffic purposes, if someone's on overtime, if I tell them, hey, we have a, a stop sign issue at, uh, Cherry, Cherry and Laurel, then they can saturate that area and focus on that and anyone can do that. Um, but if you have inconsistencies in that person that are, you know, sharing, um, ideas and it could be all over the place and not consistent for what we need in the city. So, additional DSU options. If we don't like the recommendation made by staff, uh, we can maintain the current voluntary overtime model using previously authorized funds for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, which is a hundred and fifty thousand. We can use the current overtime model with, uh, incorporating existing CSO, no change of budget, but this would impact operationally within our unit. So we would, you know, use a CSO when they are available, which would be intermittent and not consistent. Option three, consider an additional full-time deputy sheriff dedicating existing and using a dedicated existing CSO. That would require an additional funding of a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Or option four, we just discontinue DSU and continue engagement through general patrol operations. And that concludes my presentation and I will take questions.
Thank you, uh, Chief Bell. I appreciate that. Any questions for Chief Bell? Okay, well, I, I've, I've got one. Um, so, um, Chief, Chief Bell, could you talk a little bit about, I mean, you, you know, you, you kind of touched on it, but could, could you help me better understand like what, what problem, um, we're solving, uh, with the community services officer? Um, what do we hope to accomplish here and, uh, why is it important at this time?
So I think as we're opening up and also, um, in my presentation earlier, how we saw on the Laurel corridor of just, uh, the commercial burglaries that are occurring overnight. You know, this is a great opportunity for a CSO to build the education with the merchants and explain, okay, this is how you can protect your business front and this is what it looks like and this is what helps us. And so that is something that a CSO can do. Also, you know, questions with, if they have questions of the city, that CSO can go to the city and to the right person and connect, make that connection. Um, and it's a lot of times, you know, we'll see that, you know, that they see the badge and the shirt, you know, not necessarily like if the CSO wears the, uh, the smart blue as we call it. Uh, but they see the badge and they're gonna ask a question. Um, whereas, you know, they might not call us or they might not reach out, but just having that access to the city, um, would benefit all of us, all departments.
And it would benefit you in, in what ways? I, I just want to drill down a little bit and then I'll, uh, hand the Florida Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, so if, uh, a business, uh, may be too busy to report a crime or like they're seeing no extra bottles, like, um, Councilmember Rec was talking about just the trash, then that CSO can then report back to us and say, okay, these are the dates and times that this trash is showing up. Okay. So now we need to utilize our patrol units out on the field and deploy them in certain hours of the evening to address that issue. So they're the eyes and ears, um, that people may not necessarily want to call. So just building that relationship with our community and just opening up the lines of communication within the city and, and us.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, and yeah, thank you, Chief Bell. Uh, good overview. A quick question. So, uh, you're recommending a CSO and, and you said a full deputy would be a hundred and seventy-two thousand. Would that be additional to what you're asking for tonight? Or is the cost of a deputy a hundred and seventy-two thousand?
The cost of a deputy for this next fiscal year is approximately three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars with salary benefits and overtime.
Okay, so the hundred and seventy-two would be on top of what you're asking for currently?
On top of the hundred and fifty that is already, um, approved.
Got it. Okay, understood. And, and could you just, you know, I, 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 I certainly hear you on the benefits. You know, our downtown is, uh, such a critical part of our community and it's just, uh, good to have, uh, a general presence and, and, and relationships being formed and, uh, be of service to, to our downtown merchants and, and just being generally available. I think it's great for community relations and our police, not to mention the direct services that, that can be delivered. Um, so it, it, it would, you know, are you recommending a CSO solely on budgetary grounds or are CSOs specifically trained in, in these kind of, uh, um, activities? Or, you know, are we, uh, gaining something by going with a CFO versus a full deputy? Um, or, you know, would, uh, does a full deputy, um, uh, uh, you know, would they actually deliver additional value if, if we did fund a full deputy for this?
If we funded a full deputy, I would like them to be out on the streets on a swing shift, um, patrolling your neighborhoods because that's where we're seeing, you know, the, the crimes. Um, so the benefit of having a CSO is that it is fiscally responsible for us to, to use, we're getting the same service from that person. So, for example, if I have a deputy sheriff that is trying to build a relationship with a merchant or a member of the community and they on view someone make an illegal U-turn right in front of them, you know, is the expectation, hold on, stop or right back, hey, you come back. And all of a sudden I have a deputy sheriff yelling down the street for this person to stop their vehicle. So whereas if we separate the two and just have the focused enforcement for the, the overtime for traffic for downtown and then we have that building relationship with the CSO, um, I think that, that is exactly what we need, um, for this model.
Okay, terrific. So the CSO is actually, uh, particularly well-suited for this role. So, uh, thank you for that.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chief Bell, for your, um, presentation and for doing this research for us. Um, I like the familiar face downtown aspect of, um, of this program. So I appreciate that. Um, my questions are, the CSO cannot, um, do moving, it cannot cite for moving violations, which you just explained to Councilmember Dugan, but they can do, um, parking enforcement. Is that correct? If someone overstays the ten-minute spot, they could ticket?
Yes, they can ticket. They can tow vehicles. They can take, uh, some crime reports, um, depending on what it is. And then we could even, uh, further that individual's training, um, to, to get them to do other things. Cause some agencies have different levels of CSOs that are allowed to do certain things. So we, we could look into further training that individual and, um, having a better asset for us downtown.
Right, okay. Cause what I'm hearing from the downtown business owners is that enforcement, um, uh, they would like to see more enforcement and we have increased our short-term parking spaces downtown to specifically be very useful for, you know, people doing quick, um, drop-offs and pickups. And when people stay in there for two or three hours, it defeats the purpose. So I, I am looking for that. Um, and then with regard to moving violations, I, as I stood there having a meeting last week, um, I saw two illegal U-turns in, in an hour. So I am interested in stepping up enforcement. If we don't, in order to get that enforcement downtown, are you, i- is your presentation saying that we need to provide the additional funding of eighty-two thousand dollars? Or would some of it be covered in what we have currently budgeted?
So with the hundred and fifty, if we subtract what a full-time CSO is, that leaves us with eighteen thousand dollars. So if we add eighty-two thousand to that, then that gives us a hundred thousand for traffic overtime enforcement in downtown. Did that make sense?
Okay, so if we approve eighty-two thousand tonight, then we're getting the CSO and the traffic overtime?
Yes.
Okay, that helps. That's very helpful. And then are you, my last question is, are you envisioning the hours of the CSO to be seven AM to five PM? Or, you know, a lot of our businesses aren't open at seven AM. I'm, I'm wondering if we can push it later in the day and then have them stay through the evening hours when, when things do get busy.
Yeah, so what we would do is we would kind of get, uh, an overall understanding of the business hours in downtown and figure out what is the best like scope or areas or times that we should deploy this resource. And, you know, obviously it would be flexible. So if there was an event going on, we would have that individual move around their schedule to, to accommodate an event. Um, so, but for me, it would be either Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, depending on what's going on that particular time. And the hours would start probably like nine or ten. You know, as I walk downtown, um, things are really picking up until like nine thirty, ten.
Right, okay. Or a little later. Okay, thank you very much, Chief Bell.
Depending on the night before.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, Councilmember Rec?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I, I don't have a question. I just went, went ready for comments or I had a, a suggestion and so I'm, I'm just want to make that point on whenever that happens.
All right, uh, we'll get to that after a public comment. Um, uh, Councilmember Dugan, it looks like you have another question?
Yes, Madam Mayor, just a quick follow-up for Chief Bell and I appreciate Vice Mayor McDowell's, uh, concerns about traffic enforcement downtown. And my question is simply, uh, does the traffic enforcement have to be overtime? Is that because you're, you're looking to extend the hours of it? Or, you know, I, 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 I guess I thought part of our relationship with the sheriff's department allowed it more of a flexible labor force. So when we needed more resources, it didn't have to be this burdensome overtime. It could be more flexible and regular. Uh, is there a reason that has to be overtime?
Yeah, so our motors that we have designated, um, in town, it's, they're both on a four-ten, uh, Monday through Friday. One has Monday off, the other has a Friday off. And that's where our concentrated traffic issues are. So, uh, within the town, like, we're very skeleton crew when it comes to traffic, just of the footprint that we have from the east side to all the way to Crestview, all the traffic complaints that we get. So it would be relatively impossible to, to service all of those complaints in a timely fashion with the expectation, uh, from our community. So, um, the overtime is to supplement, um, those resources.
I- if it's, uh, so stretched, I mean, uh, uh, like what would we have to invest to have another fully dedicated resource in a way that we wouldn't be paying time and a half for how much ever worse the overtime is?
So if you're suggesting, are you suggesting to have a, an additional motor?
I, I, maybe. I, I guess I just want to understand that.
So that would just be, um, that would be your three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for an additional motor, plus the cost of a new motor and the cost of the training to, to deploy the motor. Um, so that's the cost. And we can actually get a lot accomplished if we, you know, have three motors stay from like four PM to seven PM downtown. And, you know, they're, they're splitting the time. It's not a whole ten-hour shift, but we're saturating the areas and being, we're hitting the hot areas. And that way people know, oh, I better not do something because I know there's always a motor there. Or every time I come down here, I see a motor. So that will deter the traffic problems.
Okay, yeah, I trust you to manage those budgetary issues. I just know overtime on a continuous basis gets expensive. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right, I'm not seeing any additional questions from council. Crystal, anybody, uh, from the community wish to make a comment at this time?
No, there are no hands.
No, there are no hands.
Okay, so we'll go move on to council comment and discussion. Councilmember Rack, you'd mentioned you had something that you wanted to remark on?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to just thank the chief for the presentation and and staff for working for like this out-of-the-box thinking. I think it's a good way to approach both the community policing and also the traffic enforcement. I was going to suggest that potentially we add a little bit more funding to this to give some flexibility with, for the for the department in terms of, for traffic saturation. So if things are working well, there are certain events or certain times that we don't have to come back to the drawing board. So I was thinking we sort of go from the eighty-two thousand to a hundred thousand dollars of additional funding. So a small amount of just eighteen thousand to just give some flexibility to the chief to deploy if things come up or change or if something, we get some hotspots. That was just my thought and I don't want to suggest since we're we're doing that.
Yeah, I think I think from my perspective, councilmember Rack, I'd rather we wait and if this motion goes forward, see how it goes and maybe revisit it in six months. And then if we want to add more money, we do so at a later date. It seems to me, based on what Chief Bell is saying, is that this is, you know, well thought out from her experience and feedback from her staff. So I'll trust the recommendation personally. And that's my my perspective. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I I'm generally in support of what Adam is suggesting. My only question is, is the extra eighteen thousand dollars enough? And what what kind of flexibility would it provide? Would it be more than enough? Would it not be enough? If we're looking for, you know, extra support for additional events and that sort of thing, I'd be interested to hear what Chief Bell, what Chief Bell's thoughts are on that.
So with just the eighty-two thousand, I did some calculations. So it's about 600 hours total for the entire fiscal year. So if we add the eighteen thousand, I'd have to do the math, but it's for every 12-hour shift, it's about a thousand dollars on overtime, about. So for me, I think that, you know, if we go with the recommendation that councilmember Rack said, it would get us back to the original two hundred and fifty thousand that was deployed when this program started. So we're not really going over that two-fifty mark, but it would create some flexibility for us. And even if I had a motor that stayed over, like, for example, you know, we utilize overtime during the eucalyptus celebrations and we had a motor go out there for a few, two motors go out there for two hours instead of one motor for four hours, right? It's more efficient with two for two hours. So that that's the flexibility that we're talking about, is that if I have the extra time and money, then we can put more people and we have resources in Woodside that can come over after they're done with their shift and team up with our our motors and hit the hot spots.
So that would give you a little bit of breathing room?
Yes, little wiggle room and.
Wiggle room, I like that term. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I I guess my perspective on this is, I I, you know, as far as additional resources, not additional resources. I mean, I I do trust that Chief Bell put a lot of time and thought into this recommendation. So typically, you know, I would agree that, you know, approving the recommendation is 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 a rational thing to do and adjust as we move forward. My my question, though, is I think I've heard a strong, you know, our downtown is in a, is is going through a transition right now and we're working on a lot of issues. And there is a lot of concern from business owners about accessibility to their businesses. You heard all our discussion about the parklets, et cetera. And I know one real pressure point are our Vice Mayor McDowell mentioned at our, you know, short-term parking spaces. And, you know, I think we would all, I think there's probably a broad consensus in this council that those short-term parking spaces become actively policed and that we are getting, allowing businesses to get that inflow of customers as they need it. You know, the dry cleaner gets the drop-off, et cetera. So I guess it's my question to you, Chief Bell. You know, as, will your recommendation allow you to rigorously, along with everything else you're foreseeing for this CSO, will they also be able to really save the day with regard to enforcing these short-term parking spaces?
Yes, and that would be my vision is that, you know, they they could chalk the tires in front of, you know, whatever business it is, go and check in with the owner and then set their alarm and then go check that that parking. So that is a part of our vision, is to really have that individual proactively enforcing the parking enforcement. But also they could utilize their partners, because we have other CSOs throughout the city, that they could communicate, hey, I just chalked, you know, the 700 block of Laurel. Can you go check on it in 20 minutes because I've got to do this thing? So just, it it just really helps to have a person down there more consistently.
Yeah, terrific. Thank you, Chief Bell. So I I guess I'm, you know, largely agnostic. I guess I would mostly approve the recommendation as as presented here.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. So, yeah, I mean, it seems to me kind of the the main issues really are around the parking enforcement, right? We've we've kind of changed the striping downtown and I heard from many of the retailers, they're concerned that it's not necessarily working. In fact, you know, maybe this is something for Stephen to take a look at. But there was a 10-minute sign where the curb wasn't green, so I'm sure you're going to get to that. But maybe we could also take a look at the, you know, if we need to make some configurations to different types of parking. Since now we're going to open it up again, how can we optimize the parking down that way? Maybe that's part of the medium-term plan as well.
Yes, that that is something we'll we'll need to look at.
Yeah, okay.
And so, Madam Mayor, that is something our CSO can communicate with Public Works when they're on their foot patrols, that they notice something that is, you know, that needs to be fixed, that that can be addressed quicker because someone saw it faster.
Great, okay, thank you. All right, Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I apologize for asking this clarifying question. But Councilmember Rack, I just wanted to circle back with you. I I had to log off for just a quick second. And I, your recommendation was to do option three, but were you suggesting a different amount? I'm I'm sorry, I just didn't hear that specific part.
Sorry, I was, thank you for the question. I was suggesting that we go with the staff recommendation, but that we increase it by eighteen thousand to allows the chief some more flexibility in terms of the traffic saturation. And also when she mentioned about eucalyptus and other things, I think it just gives flexibility versus us having to go back again to bring this item up again if necessary versus it she, it it just gives some more flexibility to her and it wasn't a a large amount from a budget standpoint. So that was that was my thought around that.
Okay, so you're saying a hundred thousand dollars instead of eighty-two?
Instead of eighty-two, correct.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate Chief Bell's mentioning of eucalyptus too, because that was an example of something that came up and we needed to put resources towards it very quickly. And I was grateful that that we could do that and that Chief Bell could could come through for the community in that way. So I would support that. Thank you.
So so to that point, if I could just ask Jeff a clarifying question, because tonight's agenda item is not eucalyptus. It's it's about downtown. And I know we have another work effort underway with respect to eucalyptus. So Jeff or Greg, could you weigh in on on that on that and how that pertains to this particular item?
Well, I can confirm that we do have another effort underway on eucalyptus. We haven't at the staff level connected that. So I think it's just sort of the past experiences that people are speaking to right now. But I'll let Greg weigh into any issues in terms of how far out we can get on this conversation in terms of public noticing.
Yeah, I think my understanding of the discussion is it's it's a dollar amount. It's not necessarily how it's, you know, you're not directing staff to how to apply the money. It's like, I I think I agree with Jeff and it's more like examples of what it could potentially be used for if it were needed. So I I think I don't see a problem changing the amount from a Brown Act perspective.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Just want to make sure we're staying tried and true.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, all right. At this point, I'd be willing to entertain a motion.
Motion, hold on, sorry, I have to unmute, find the document again. One second, sorry. I move to adopt ordinance.
Resolution.
Oh, sorry, resolution. Sorry, I gotta find it here. Adopt resolution 2021 dash, oh, I'm sorry. I guess it just has maintained the current model, right? Or my, oh, I see.
No, you're you're going to three, number three.
Oh, sorry, God, thank you. It's late. Number three, adopting a resolution 2021 dash.
Sixty-nine.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos authorized amendment to the law enforcement services agreement with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office for the Downtown Services Unit Program for fiscal year 2021-2022, approving a full-time community officer, increasing the appropriation by one hundred thousand dollars funded by the supplemental law enforcement services fund.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Rack, second by Collins. Any further discussion or comment? Okay, Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Okay, Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Parma Lohe.
Yes. Okay, so the next item is consideration of adopting resolution approving the Alameda de los Pogos landslide repair project, number C-1751, plans and specifications, and authorizing the advertisement for bids. And the presentation will be made by Grace Lee, City Engineer. Welcome, Grace.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Grace Lee, City Engineer. I'll be giving a back, a brief background on the Alameda de los Pogos landslide repair project. Next slide, please. Back in February of 2017, a series of storms caused erosion and a landslide adjacent to Alameda de los Pogos that's in the back of St. Charles Church. At the time, our maintenance crew tarp the area just to make sure that there's no further soil saturations to stabilize the area. Next slide, please. The recommended repair for the slide is to add storm, or subterrains and bench fill the area in a QA design. Typical design is shown in front. For the past few years, staff has been seeking FEMA grant and subsequently federal highway administration grant as well. At this point, it does not look like we'll be getting any federal funding, but we are moving forward with the project. After advertisement, staff will bring back the project for contract award sometime in September and hope to conclude and complete the project before the wet, the wet season. Next slide, please. The action before council is to adopt a resolution approving the plans and specifications and authorizing the advertisement for bid for the Alameda de los Pogos landslide repair project. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of quick ones. First, I didn't see any dollar amounts in the staff report. Is there any kind of engineering or or guidance estimate going out with this bid?
Yeah, so the engineer's estimate is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're hoping to, that is a little bit outdated. This was designed back in 2018, but we decided to have, we'll know the actual cost once it's advertised and now to bid.
Okay, but that's that's, we're like in that zone. So and then my only other question is like, can you just take us through, you know, that's a lot of money. You know, why is this the city's problem exactly? Like, you know, where are the, you know, I didn't see a survey. Is this all city land? And, you know, is it just because it's a butts our road or something like that? Can you just walk me through why why we own this problem?
Sure, and there there was a a survey done as part of the plan. So we know exactly where this landslide area is. It is a downslope of Alameda de los Pogos. The upper portion of it is right away and the lower portion of it is an easement in the, in private property, but in easement. And so the easement, we believe, is for us to access and maintain the roadway. And our concern with the landslide is that it might undermine the Alameda de los Pogos roadway.
Okay, yeah, and I'm sorry, it's an easement. So it's, the bottom half is owned by, I guess, St. Charles, and we have an easement to get on there to maintain that.
That's correct.
Okay, and and was this, was was Alameda, was that constructed as, was this a built-up grade? Is that an artificial slope that's there?
It's definitely a built-up grade. And we, I, we're assuming the easement, the access is because it would be harder to, I mean, the the slope is supporting the roadway and we need to maintain it from the slope side as well.
Yeah, got it. So it seems like we probably constructed that whole thing at one time and that's that. So, yeah, it makes sense we we own the problem. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, we we did in in the 1970s, early 70s, Alameda was widened. And then I, in the early 80s, in the big El Nino year, there was a slide there previously, almost in this exact location, that we had to repair. So this is like the second time that we've had to repair this area, which is, as pointed out, supports that roadway. And there's a, you know, there's a bit, there's an issue if if there were, if we don't do something here, there's an issue of our roadway kind of sliding down the hill and and causing a huge disruption to traffic and 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 possible damage down downhill too.
Got it. Well, I use that road every day, so I'm on board. With it not sliding down the hill.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm not seeing any additional questions from council. Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to make comment on this item?
Yes, there is one hand at the moment. Debbie Balducci, you should be able to unmute.
Yes, thank you very much. I've been advocating for this repair with Public Works for a while and they've been, unbeknownst to me, they've already been working on that. But that area is directly at the base of the Black Mountain site. And we walk by there. And that is just so prone to erosion there. It's very steep. And like other people, we're concerned about the collapse of Alameda, the roadway there in the event of like an atmospheric river after all this period of drought. So the only thing I would ask Grace Lee to comment on is whether or not the undertakings are going to be sufficient to hold that slope in place, especially if the heavy construction equipment on Black Mountain causes vibration or other effects uphill from that. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. I appreciate that. Grace, is that something that you can answer now or something that you could potentially follow up with Debbie to answer her question at a later time?
I can give a short answer and can follow up with Debbie later as well. Any construction that Black Mountain does, they would have to monitor and ensure. We usually require them to have a before survey and an after survey. So any any damage caused by their construction is theirs to repair. As for this landslide, we did do two geotechnical thorns. And it's, it's, it's generally believed that this is caused by the storm saturation and not so much as any other vibration or movement. It's really just saturated soil during those intense storm events.
Okay, thank you. Crystal, any additional members of the public wish to make a comment on this item?
No, there are no hands.
Okay, any additional comment or discussion from council? All right, seeing none. Is there any interest in making a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt resolution 2021 dash.
Seventy.
Seventy. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving the Alameda de los Pogos landslide repair project, number C-1751, plans and specifications, and authorizing the advertisement for bids.
I'll second that.
Okay, so moved by McDowell, seconded by Dugan. Any further discussion or comment? All right, Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor Parma Lohe?
Yes. Okay, that brings us to item 11E, consideration of adopting a resolution approving. Okay, that brings us to item eleven E, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the Burton Park batting cages, project number C two thousand and one, plans and specifications and authorizing the advertisement for bids. I see Councilmember Rack has his hand up. Councilmember Rack?
I need to recuse myself because I live within 500 feet of Burton Park.
All right, thank you. Crystal, when we're finished with this item, if you could text Councilmember Rack so he can come back for the last two items, that would be helpful. Okay, and we will be taking a report from Amy Newby, Parks and Recreation Director. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening. So tonight for the final item of the meeting, I would like to introduce, introduce Nate Ritchie with Calendar Associates, our consultants on this project. And Nate will be taking you through the design process for the new batting cages at Burton Park. He and I will be available for questions following the presentation.
Thanks, Amy. So we prepared plans for a new batting cage at Burton Park. I'm going to give you a short presentation, which has described a design process that we went through. The next slide. So these are images of the existing batting cages out there today. The image on the left shows the batting cage from Woodland Avenue. And then the picture on the right shows where we are proposing to put the new batting cage in the open lawn area there. Next slide. These images show the cage in a little bit more detail. The one on the left, you can see it's very close to the existing trees out there. Those are, that's a redwood grove right there. And that's really what's, that's the main reason it's causing it to be in such a poor condition. So on the slide on the right, you can see the surface inside of the cage. There's a lot of root, root damage where the roots have uplifted the surface there and that's causing a tripping hazard. So that's what, that's what we're trying to remedy here. Next slide. This is the proposed plan and we studied several locations and this is the one that we came up with after some feedback. And you can see it's pushed much farther away from the tree canopies. It's actually outside of all the, all the canopy there. We had received feedback from stakeholders and also the Parks, Recreation and Culture Commission and we incorporated all their comments into the design here. So the, the main, the main thing with the cage is that it's, it's aligned with the foul line fence on the baseball field there. The new cage is, is larger. It went from 25 feet wide to 30 feet wide. And then there's a concrete entrance area on the right and also an accessible path of travel from the sidewalk at Woodland. Next slide. This is a photo of a cage that's similar to what we're proposing. So it's got a, it's got two separate hitting bays on the interior and they're, they're completely separated from each other. And then also this black chain link fencing. And the cage, cage that we're presenting or that we're posing at Burton actually has a, an angled roof. This, this cage has a flat roof and that's, that's the main difference there. And we chose an angled design so that if baseballs are hit on top of the cage, they'll, they'll fall, they'll roll off to the sides. We prepared the plans and submitted them to the building department and we got, that included structural calculations for the design. We got approved in June and construction could start in September and it would last for about two and a half months. And at this point, I'm happy to respond to any questions anybody has.
You, any, any questions from council? Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, just, thank you, Madam Mayor, just a very quick question. So I assume this project budget is covering the demo of the old cage, but does it also cover the rehabilitation of, of that land since we're moving this? I just want to make sure, you know, it's kind of an opportunity. We're getting more park back closer to Woodland Avenue like that and just want to make sure that's going to be put in, in a good place.
Yeah, currently we're proposing to, the existing surface condition in there is a mulch. And so that we are, we're going to extend that condition to where we're going to fill in the old cage and we're going to extend the, the surrounding condition and to fill in that footprint.
Okay, and Amy, you're happy with where the park will be on the other side of this?
Yes, yep.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Okay, thank you. I'm not seeing any additional questions from council. So Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to make a comment?
No, there are no hands.
Okay. Any further discussion from council? Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you. I just wanted to say how appreciative I am for the inclusive process. I know that all the different sports leagues weighed in and the Parks and Rec Commission weighed in and in fact submitted some edits at the, during the last review. So I appreciate that flexibility to really hear out the community. We heard from Craig Strong at the beginning of our meeting about how important baseball is to our community and I think this will just be a wonderful addition. So thank you for the hard work.
Yep. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, I'll just echo that. It's a great addition of the park. My son used the old one and this new one will help the next generation of great San Carlos ball players. So that's exciting. The, and, and I also just, I, I love the private-public partnership around this as well. And just do thank Premier Capital and Prince Street Partners who are funny in this. Really, really appreciate that, that, that those kind of efforts go a long way to help keeping San Carlos great. And I will say, one of the ways I'm, I'm, I'm a geek is I actually like construction drawings and this has been a nice year. So earlier this year, got a firehouse with a fire pole in it. Loved seeing that. And now I have a set of construction plans for a batting gate. So having a good year on the construction plan nerd front. Thank you.
Big and small. Diversify you.
Councilmember Collins?
Madam Mayor, I just wondered if you're ready for a motion?
I, I just wanted to just kind of echo my thanks to Amy and team on this. I know we got feedback a while back on the need for this and I really appreciate the active listening and responding. And I also want to just throw a shout out to the softball players, the girls out there. Women, girl's sports is super important. So I'm really hoping that they get equal access to these cages as well. All right, Councilmember Collins?
You ready for a motion now? All right. I move to adopt resolution 2021 dash.
Seventy one.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving the Burton Park batting cages, project number C two thousand and one, plans and specifications and authorizing the advertisement for bids.
I'll second that.
All right, forwarded by Collins, seconded by Dugan. Any further discussion? All right, Crystal, can you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack is recused and Mayor Parma Lohan?
Yes.
All right, and Crystal, when you're ready, if you could just bring back Adam. Let him know we're done with that item. Okay, so this brings us to our last item, agenda setting. The item is consideration of agendizing an item, increasing transparency for commercial and housing development. I'm not sure who forwarded this, so.
This is my item, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, it's my item. Thank you. So I was just thinking about how we've got a significant amount of commercial development and housing development coming up over the next, sort of pick a number of months, years. And I wanted to make sure we were doing as much as we could to sort of inform the public about this beforehand. I find sometimes the public, they, well, it won't be perfect. The, you know, sometimes we hear about things, the public feels like they hear things after things are approved. So for example, I think we require signage at a development site after a project is approved versus maybe when it's submitted to planning. And so I talked, I checked with a couple of the other cities, so San Mateo and Burlingame, I spoke with council members and with Redwood City, I've been told that they require some, some signage at properties beforehand so that the public can understand kind of what's happening at different sites. And then also, yeah, I just think as we look at sort of our website, what are we doing in terms of, you know, informing the public and, and encouraging public engagement with some of these larger projects that we have. I know we're doing the East Side Vision Plan, but you know, there are other projects happening around town. And I think, I don't think it needs to happen for every single development, but you know, some, some of the larger scale ones that we could sort of establish a threshold. So I just want to agendaize, I think it's something worth looking into so that we're more transparent with the public and, you know, wanted to throw that out for council considerations.
Yeah, sure, Madam Mayor, if I could, I, I would just chime in to say, as a council, it feels like we've gotten a lot of feedback from the community and even in my short time on the council, as far as no one, you know, as far as people being a little bit surprised at how things have been rolled out. So I, I don't know how we benchmark against other cities or how other cities handle things. But I, I appreciate Councilmember Rack bringing this forward. I think it's worth us taking a look at it, especially as we roll into all these very significant projects coming down the pike.
Thank you. And I see Vice Mayor McDowell's hand is up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I, I agree with John. I appreciate Adam bringing this up. I think that looking at ways to increase transparency with our community is really important. Continuing to put projects on our website is something that I've talked a lot about. But I think that having, you know, something out actually at the project site where people are driving by would, would be an interesting thing to, to take a look at. So I would support bringing this back for further discussion.
Okay, so that's that then. That brings us to the close of the meeting.
Sorry, through the chair, we did have a public comment on that last item.
Ah, I'm sorry, I didn't realize. Okay.
So let me go ahead and bring in Debbie. You should be able to unmute.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, I'd just like to thank you so much for putting on this, this on the agenda. And that was one of the things that me and many of my neighbors are asking about from the perspective that most people don't go to planning commission meetings or they won't go to some of the other specialty meetings on development. So they rely a lot on the city council for getting the primary news. So when people learn things like there's going to be three million square feet of commercial development and then they subsequently learn that some of it is in a flood zone, that there's toxic water wells in some of it, it just feels like, wait, what's happening? So if the city council wouldn't mind just letting people know or ask questions about that in your venue, rather than directing us all to go to planning or the east side or when we bring up sea level rise, we mean flooding. So rather than say, go to see what the county's doing, it's the city that sets permits, that sets zoning, that allows construction in these areas that may be inundated. So you're the body that can say yes or no to whether that's safe or not. But then if there is something that goes wrong and sea level rise comes up and there's flooding, then it goes to the taxpayers or the county to solve the problem. So all we want as a community is have you as the city council, tell us about those things, look at the risk and then let us know what the mitigations are, just to put everyone's mind at ease. So thank you very much for putting that on the agenda and understanding what it is that people want to hear about and why the city council is the forum for how the most people will hear about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you, Debbie.
All right, all right, well, if there's nothing else, then the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. Lots covered tonight.
Thank you. See you next time.
I'm sorry?
And hopefully in person next time.
Oh, yeah, oh, yes. So, yeah, so with that, so I just want it noted that we're ending this very robust agenda before 10:30. There was no extension requested. And our next meeting will be a summer recess to give our staff a much needed break. That doesn't mean the work isn't happening because it still is. City Hall is open. But we will be reconvening in person on August 23rd, Monday night, and it'll be hybrid. So if people enjoy zooming in to the call, that will still be available to you. And if you want to come in person to city council chambers, we will be open and conducting the meeting in person. So thank you all to staff for making that happen and, you know, moving forward in these crazy times with this different format and then iterating on it as we move back out of the pandemic. So thank you, everyone, very much. Great discussions this evening. Lots accomplished. And we will see you August 23rd, if not before. Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Enjoy your.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good night.
Good night, everybody.